Twenty, and I'm gonna call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. It is six P M. And Ms. Hunt, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Walters, did you have any change to the agenda this evening before we get started? No?
I did.
All right.
Um, on the agenda, we have, uh, two public hearings listed. However, the first of those two, the closed record decision hearing on the crossings cottages, is not actually a public hearing. Um, I think it's a mistake to describe it as such because we're not inviting public comment on it. Public hearing was held before the Planning Commission. We're not allowed to hold more than one public hearing on a close, uh, on a, a land use decision. Um, so I would, I had suggested that closed record hearings not be listed under public hearings on the agenda in the future. And that the public hearing on the budget where we are inviting comments, um, that we not delay that item until after the closed record hearing on the crossings cottages. So, my motion is that we move item five A, which is the closed record hearing on the crossings cottages, to be the first item under, uh, item six, other business.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters.
Who's second?
We have a second by Mr. McDougal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so we will move the closed record, uh, decision hearing on the crossings to the first item under number six. And to clarify those in the audience, if you're a party of record and you spoke previously, you will be able to speak this evening. All right, so, that being done, we're gonna go on to item two A, which is, um, Association of Washington Cities is here tonight to make a presentation of advanced certificates of municipal leadership to myself and Councilman Walters. Welcome, Mr. King. Peter King, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to be with you for a few minutes this evening. Uh, let me first say I wish that I was there in person. I'm getting a little tired of Zoom meetings, and I'm sure you are as well, and it's tough to get out in the community, so I wish I were there. Um, I'm here to, uh, present an advanced certificate of municipal leadership to the mayor and Councilmember Walters, but I also wanna take a minute to acknowledge Emily Shu, uh, your Director of Administrative Services. I know Emily in her role as a leader with our Employee Benefit Trust. Uh, one of our programs that now provides, uh, medical dental vision and other benefits to over two hundred and seventy-five cities and towns and thirty-six thousand employees and dependents across the state. Emily has been a, as the Chair of our Advisory Committee, uh, elected by her peers to serve on that, and then as a result of that, she serves on the Board of Trustees for the Employee Benefit Trust. So she's been a real valued member. I just wanted to thank her publicly and thank you for allowing her to participate on that important program. A little bit of background on the advanced certificate program. Uh, our Certificate of Municipal Leadership Program is open to all mayors and council members, uh, in the state. Uh, it provides knowledge and skills to effectively operate within the law, plan and secure managed funds, foster community and staff relationships. And it was created and started about twenty-three years ago. Um, it requires about thirty, excuse me, thirty credits of study, but the advanced certificate, which is added later, which we're talking about this evening, uh, requires an additional, uh, thirty hours of credit and also a community service component. So that includes service on other boards and commissions, which I know you all participate in. And over the years, about eleven hundred mayors and council members have completed the basic program, and about three hundred and fifty have completed the advanced certificate. So, in an average year, we may have, uh, you know, a dozen, maybe fifteen elected officials that earn this award. All of you as council members are automatically in the program if you take any kind of A W S C program that has C M L credit, and you can go online and take a look at what, how many credits you've earned and where you stand in making progress to the C M L or the advanced C M L. And it covers rules and responsibilities, legal requirements, public sector resource management, community planning and development, and then effective local leadership. And we've expanded our online education, first to accommodate busy schedules and, and lack of travel, and then COVID hit, uh, so we are providing, uh, more and more content available to you. Our June annual conference, uh, was all virtual this year. You can go in, any, uh, city official can go in and earn ten credits by going through different training that's offered there. And almost all of our, uh, workshops is, are recorded and the content's available. Uh, looking back, one week in August, we had a, a day-long session in budgeting, we had a two-hour race equity and leadership, uh, workshop, and we did a session for CARES Act for smaller communities. And from about March to September, we did thirty-four different seminar, seminars online and hit about thirty-four hundred registrants. So all of that information and content's online. If you're interested in a particular topic, I would encourage you to take a look at that. Um, so, the advanced certificate acknowledges the continued commitment to education and community service, and so I'm here to acknowledge and congratulate Mayor Gear and Councilmember Walters for achieving the, uh, certificate. So, on behalf of A W S C President Sue Ing Moody, the Mayor of Twisp, and the A W S C Board of Directors, I extend my sincere congratulations for your achievement and dedication to continued education on behalf of your community and for the citizens of Anacortes. So congratulations.
Thank you, Peter. All right, well, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Yes, I will say that the courses have been very, um, helpful along the way. They've given you resources you wouldn't have any other way, so I really appreciate that being out there for all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that being said, we're gonna, we're gonna say goodnight, Peter, and we're gonna get on with our council agenda.
All right.
All right. So the next item this evening is item two B, which is my COVID nineteen update. And as of today, November second, Island Hospital has tested seven thousand three hundred and seven people, or individual tests. Uh, we've had seventy-six positive tests in Anacortes, ten people have been hospitalized and zero deaths. As of yesterday in Skagit County, we've had one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven positive cases. We've hospitalized a hundred and five, and we now have an additional death. We have twenty-four deaths in the county. Washington State Department of Health, um, confirms that we've had one hundred and eight thousand two hundred and fifteen confirmed cases with two thousand three hundred and sixty-six deaths in the state of Washington. Uh, we're all still working on our metrics, um, to someday move to the next phase. The county must have fewer than twenty-five cases for a hundred thousand residents over fourteen consecutive days. We currently have fifty point three new cases per a hundred thousand residents. The county must have greater than fifty individuals tested per each new case during the prior week, and we don't have the updated information on that. Number three, the percentage of individuals testing positive must be less than two percent, and we're currently at one point three percent. The percentage of beds occupied in the county must be less than eighty percent, and we're currently at seventy-six point seven percent. And number five, lastly, percentage of beds occupied by COVID nineteen cases must be less than ten percent, and we're currently at one point nine percent. In the United States, we've had, uh, nine million thirty-three hundred cases, and ninety-three, yeah, nine million thirty-three thousand cases, and we've had two hundred and thirty-one thousand deaths in the United States. Globally, we've had forty-six million cases and one point two million deaths globally. And that is my COVID update for tonight. And we'll move on now to item two C, which is the Information Technology Committee. And, um, Mr. McDougal, I bet.
Mayor Gear, yep. Yeah, I T committee met earlier in the, uh, I guess later last week, and, uh, we basically got a preview of an item on tonight's agenda, the Storage Spaces Direct Solution item. And what that is, is it's basically, um, I T is looking to, to expand our server footprint in our, in the data center and the library. Um, all of the internal systems that the city is running are, they're all, for the most part, they're virtualized and they're running kind of smashed into just a couple of servers, and we're really kind of at a ceiling of our capacity within the internal system. So, previously, I T had spoken with us about a, like a hyper-converged cluster. This is a few months back. Um, they've actually made some modifications to that design, working with, um, with, uh, some, uh, consultants, and so they're bringing back that modified design tonight. So, we got a preview of that, but I'll, uh, rather than steal their thunder, I'll let, uh, I T do detail the rest of it later tonight.
All right. All right, so, um, anything else on that? All right, we'll move on then to item two D, which is our Finance Committee Report. Anyone like to update us, or we'll cover it during the budget?
Mayor Gear, we had a, a very detailed Finance Committee meeting, um, where we went through a lot of different aspects of, of, uh, the budget, including the open positions that are listed in the budget but are not currently filled and may not be expected to be filled. And we went through, um, analysis of how much money we are spending on fiber in the next year, and where that money is coming from, and where we are spending the one point eight million dollars that we're taking out of the Equipment Repair Fund and the, um, Payment Management Program. Um, I, I think that we can, uh, delay all those conclusions to our actual discussion on the budget, but that is, that is the subject of what the, our meeting was about.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, the Public Works Report, Committee Report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met just prior to this meeting, and it was Councilmember Walters, Councilmember Young, and I, along with Public Works staff. We talked about our agreement with Green Direct, the Skookumchuck Wind Turbine Project. That, the rates have changed on that. This is kinda boring, but, um, it's sort of impor, I mean, it is, it's just kinda boring, honestly, but, um, it will, it hasn't changed much, but it does need to come to council for an overview and a vote to change the contract. Nothing much is changing, but technically, we need to change the contract a little bit. So that's coming up. Um, we talked about the planned water treatment plant shutdown that will happen this Wednesday, November fourth, from eight A M. to eight P M. This is a planned shutdown, and the reason is pretty exciting, actually, because that new three thousand foot raw water line that was pulled underneath the Skagit River that's gonna be hooked up for redundancy in our water system is going to be hooked up on each end. So that twelve-hour shutdown should not affect, um, residents very much at all. The refineries will be offline. They already, they have enough storage to get them through that twelve-hour period. They have enough, actually, to get through a twenty-four hour period without water from, um, from Anacortes Water Treatment Plant. Also, O'Carver and LaConner and the tribes all have, have water stored, so they'll be fine, and residents will be fine, too. There are fifty homes up high in the Whistle Lake area that might be impacted a little bit by lower pressure, but otherwise, there should be no interruption in service. But it's also a good idea to try to limit our consumption during that twelve-hour period. And, um, yeah, it's a very exciting project. In fact, uh, all of council and the mayor were invited to go tour the water treatment plant and see the progress of the raw water line, and it was awesome. Um, Councilmember Walters, Cleland McGrath, and I all went, and it was so cool to see that big pipe going under the river and just to think of all the work and the engineering and the calculating that went into making that happen. It was truly impressive. Um, and Brian McDaniel, the Water Treatment Planet, Plant Manager, gave Ms. Cleland McGrath and I a tour of the plant itself, and it, it's very, very impressive. You could literally eat off the floor, and to meet the employees and learn a little bit about how it runs was really, was really fantastic. So I can't say enough good things about that. I really appreciate that we got to do that. Um, the next thing we talked about was, uh, long-range transportation projects that Public Works has identified that the city does not have funding for, and keeping track of those. So, uh, Rob Hoxsey in Mapping is going to create an interactive story map with text, photos, drone footage, and it'll be an interactive map of all these projects that have been identified as necessary but are sort of on hold for now. So we'll all be able to go and look at those and, um, get the scoop on those. We talked about the wastewater outfall project, and we're still looking at fall of twenty twenty-one construction, and also staff has, is identifying a possible partnership with FEMA to fix the existing outfall and also to construct the new one. So that's in progress, and we'll know more about that soon, but that's a really exciting opportunity that may come to fruition. And lastly, we talked about the Genafuel Contract, uh, as, which is on our agenda this evening, so I won't talk further about that. It's about the hydrothermal processing of our wastewater and turning it into, uh, usable, renewable fuel. I think that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Moulton. Are there any other comments on any of the reports? Okay. So now, we're gonna go to the public comment, item number three on the agenda. And public comment is for anyone to speak to the council on an issue that is not on the agenda tonight. So if you're, uh, your comments are, refer to something we're gonna talk about, wait till that agenda item, but if your comments are something separate, it's your time to speak. Everyone will have three minutes. If you can introduce yourself, say with, introduce yourselves with your name and address, and Matt Kaufman will get you started. So, uh, let's move ahead. I'm looking to see who we have. Do you want to put your hands up? Okay, I see Carol Bourdain. Do you wanna go first, and then Drake Elliott will follow you?
Uh, can you hear me?
I, we can hear you. Welcome.
Great, hi, how are ya?
Very good.
Okay. I just wanna comment, um, on the A Avenue City Dump, and I wanted to know what is happening with that so far as the city goes to require cleanup in that, in that site, because we have a lot of rainy months that are coming ahead of us, and I want to know what is happening with that whole issue. Can you provide, uh, information?
Well, we are working on it, and we're working closely with the Department of Ecology, and if you wanna contact our office tomorrow, I can give you more information.
Okay.
We are working with the Department of Ecology.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right, the next person that has their hand up is Drake Elliott.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, um, hi, nice to meet you. My name is Drake Elliott, um, and I just wanted to state my deep concern for witnessing the Thin Blue Lives emblems and stickers that I've seen on the Anacortes Police Cars and worn on the officer's person. Um, Blue Lives Matter is a political movement that began in response to the Black Lives Matter movement, and, um, I'm not here today to argue its poignant political background and controversial whatever. I'm just here as a citizen of the city who doesn't think that there should be any sort of political affiliations on, uh, city utilities that are used by everybody. Um, the fact that I have a negative political association with the emblems being worn by the officers or placed on the cars, and one resident of the town may not, is precisely the reason why there should not be any sort of politically, um, associated representation on any sort of public vehicle or public officer's person. Um, and I am very concerned when I see those, and I am sure that somewhere within the city rules, there is something stating that the prohibition of political affiliation on city utilities, and if there isn't, this would be a perfect moment in which to make one.
Thank you, Drake. Um, that is under discussion, so you're being heard.
Okay, and what is being discussed about it?
Well, I should, we just started that, and so, like, I can give you more if you wanna contact, if you wanted to contact my office tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
What should, is, anytime during the day, good?
Anytime, and we'll get you to the right person and give you the information.
Okay. Via email or phone call, or how should I call?
Uh, email'd be a great place to start.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, Erica McPee Shaw, welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, thanks. My name is Erica McPee Shaw. Um, I live in Lower Rock Ridge neighborhood, and neighbors yesterday, uh, told me about this meeting and asked me to attend, uh, to speak about the Crossroads Cottage Development. I understand it's on the agenda later, um, but it looks like it's a closed agenda item, so I, I think I should maybe be speaking now, um, although I'm not sure. Um, I'll try to keep this brief.
Thanks, Erica.
Mm-hmm.
This is, um, it's a closed record hearing?
I can't hear you now, I'm sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, Erica?
No, not really.
Okay.
It's not really about the crossroads. I actually just wanna bring up some stuff about traffic and to say something that I think I wanna interest you in.
Okay, if you could keep it not about that.
The ideas, mm-hmm.
But separate from the crossroads, you can talk to us, but it can't be about the crossroads because you're not a party of record on that project. Does that make sense?
I can't hear anything you're saying, unfortunately. If you can hear me, I can talk, um, 'cause it's, and you can-
Matt, can you get ahold of her?
Yeah, Erica, um, if you, are you able to hear me pretty well?
I can hear you.
Okay, if you can give me a call, uh, my phone number's at the top of the city agenda. We can troubleshoot, maybe get you a little bit louder, and we can get you back in line, okay?
Yeah, it's not working at all, so, um, yeah, you know, some of the people in the city have my email address, so maybe you could just email me, and I'll let you know some things that, um, we've been thinking about here for this, for this, for this, for this, for this neighborhood in terms of adding some friction to some of the streets around here, slow people, people that-
Oh, Matt.
Not that closely related to that development, so.
Okay, Matt, well, tell her, uh, she can email me tomorrow when you get ahold of her, okay?
Will do, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, the next person up is, uh, Rochelle. Can you hear me, Rochelle?
Ma'am, Mayor, we were having a little bit of issues with Rochelle, uh, talking, so we're gonna see if we can get her on the line right now.
Hello? Hello, Rochelle? Are you here?
Yes, who's she?
All right, can you hear me?
I am, I am here.
Okay, welcome.
Yes, I can.
All right, you've got about-
Thank you.
-three minutes to talk to the council. Thanks for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you, guys, thanks. I wanna ask a few questions. I don't know why we still don't have a policy against, um, chokeholds and carotid artery holds, and we shouldn't hire three more cops, we should fire, hire social workers. That being said, my comments today are on the lack of policy preventing police and city employees from using or displaying the Thin Blue Line flag, Blue Lives Matter, and any associated hearts, skulls, and other disgustingness or political ideology. There are countless counties, municipalities, cities, and police departments themselves, such as the Tacoma Police Department and the City of San Francisco, that have chosen to be on the right side of history and stop promoting a racist ideology, brotherhood, and the Thin Blue Line symbolism amongst on-duty police officers. Quelling the question amongst community members if their active-duty police officers are complicit in racism and radical white is-right militia and terrorist extremist groups by creating a policy in which they put an end to displaying the Thin Blue Line symbolism on police uniforms, masks, vehicles, and property. We need a policy against this display of openly racist ideology and the brotherhood of cops. It's unacceptable that I have to see my police, which are supposedly here to protect and serve our citizens and our community and hometown in which we pay their salaries, have to question their impartiality while seeing them drive past with a blatant symbol of racism and white power militias, or a symbol of solidarity for the code of silence and a brotherhood of police. As a civil servant whom I pay, I find it disgusting. I shouldn't have to wonder if they support a militia or are in a police gang like they have proven that exists in Orange County and will treat me as a woman who protests in solidarity for equal rights and for Black Lives Matter movement differently than any other citizen in which I believe I have already felt that prejudice. I spoke to Sergeant Sam King about his police not taking the fact seriously that I am stalked, threatened, assaulted, and harassed by a religious zealot, in which he dismissed it as a low priority issue, which I find unbelievable, and during this conversation, he told me he supports the brotherhood of policing and the symbolism of blue, Blue Lives Matter. And if I didn't watch mainstream media, I could inform myself of the truth. This is the exact problem with this symbolism. It promotes a brotherhood and a code of silence within the police force, and I also understand police too small is okay with this symbolism as well, despite knowing it has been co-opted by open racist and right-wing militia and terrorist organizations. As a citizen of Anacortes and a human, I shouldn't have to wonder if people who are sworn to protect us are- It was disgusting to hear my speakers promoting racist talking points and ideology supporting the brotherhood of policing. This symbolism and all political symbolism on city property, uniforms, masks, and vehicles need to be removed immediately. No matter who wins this election tomorrow, the country will still be polarized, and that's why I would like this issue to be addressed, like, now. Also, and then again, why don't we have, uh, artery holes and stuff like that? And I'm all done.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next person that's speaking tonight is Kayla House. Kayla, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you, welcome. You have three minutes.
So, I was wondering what exactly the city council is doing to enforce and deliver on the promises of the twenty sixteen, twenty sixty resolution? Con- considering that, um, you know, uh, protesting with B L M. on the, uh, Safeway, uh, sidewalk, we constantly hear hate speech and are, uh, subject to death threats and the like. So what exactly is the city council doing for our protection and to enforce this resolution?
Well, we're not gonna be able to discuss that tonight, but we will take that, um, and internally and, and begin that discussion.
Okay.
Is that everything tonight, Kayla?
That's everything.
Okay, I appreciate you being here. Um, thank you. All right, does anyone else like to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, well, thank you all for coming and talking to the council, um, and you always can reach out to interview the council members or to my office tomorrow. All right, at this time?
Uh, Mayor.
Yeah, who am I talking to?
Anthony.
Oh, Anthony, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Anthony.
No, I just, uh, you know, I, I just thought it would be appropriate if, um, I respond just a second, not to the individuals, but to the overarching issue.
That's fine.
Uh, the, the mayor, myself, and council really are having a deep discussion about these things, and that's what I can tell you right now. I promise you that, you know, all of those issues, uh, will come forward, and hopefully we'll find a be, a solution that works for everyone, but we wanna assure you that it's not just being, um, glossed over. I can tell you that, so, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, um-
Matt Kaufman.
Hi, Matt.
Hey, um, uh, we have one attendee who, uh, Carol Bourdain, who keeps raising her hand and putting it back down. I'm not sure if Carol is wanting to speak right now, or if she's just, uh, having some malfunctions. So I'm gonna allow her to speak, uh, but she is also one of the parties of record for the future stuff, too, so I just wanted to find out if she had something else to add, so I'm gonna allow her to talk right now.
We're gonna check with her and then, okay.
Hi, I'm back.
Hi, Carol.
Hi. I, um, was told, informed by Libby Grage, that the people who were not able to attend the September twenty-third, or October fourteenth meeting due to the power outage on the internet, that those people who had put in comments, either written or, uh, verbally could, would comment, uh, be able to comment. So, because of that outage, she was able to arrange tonight for, um, the- So, because of that outage, she was able to arrange tonight for, um, the meeting because Nell Stranberg could come tonight.
Okay.
So, I'm sure that those thirty people are waiting to say something that are on, that have provided their written comments and/or public testimony.
Okay. When we get to that, I will check with everyone that's here and make sure that they are a party of record and let them talk if they put something in writing. So, we'll work through that when we get to that item, but thank you.
I appreciate that very much.
Thanks for pointing that out to me Carol.
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you Matt. All right, at this time, um, there's no other public comment, I want to make sure that we've got everybody that wanted to talk. Okay, we're gonna move on then to the consent agenda, item, items four A and B, minutes of October twenty-sixth, and the approval of claims.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Mayor Gear. Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
A second.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both saying aye, motion carries. So, at this time, we're gonna move on to our only, our public hearing this evening. And the public hearing is on the twenty twenty-one budget. This is a discussion only this evening, and, um, we will start with that. Mr. Hogland, do you want to start us out? And then we'll open it up to the public and then council discussion.
Sure Mayor, thank you so much. Uh, I thought I would just put up, um, hopefully, uh, put up a copy of the, uh, of the ordinance that outlines the city budget. We spent the last couple of council meetings talking about the city budget at a more detailed level. Um, so this is the proposed budget, seventy-three point three million, um, covering, uh, both the governmental funds and the utility funds. Uh, I did want to remind, uh, council and the public that this budget does incorporate a one percent property tax increase as presented, and that one percent property tax increase requires a resolution of substantial need this year because the IPD was less than one percent. Both of those items are scheduled to come back to council on November twenty-third. Uh, and that's also when we have this ordinance for adoption scheduled to come back to council. Um, we do have more time than that if council would like. Um, the property tax resolution is due to the county by November thirtieth. Uh, the budget itself is not required to be adopted until December thirty-first. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and I, I would suggest Mayor, if you wanted to leave this public hearing open for another week, uh, we do have time in our schedule for that as well.
I will take you up on that. I think this is important, to take as much time as we need. All right, so, anything from the council before I open up to the public? All right, we'll go to the public now. Is there anyone that's attending this evening that would like to talk to the council about the budget? I, I see a couple of hands up. Um, we will ta- okay, Drake Elliott, um, we'll take you first. And what are your comments on the, um, budget Drake? Drake Elliott, can you hear me? All right, we'll move to Dennis Clark, and we'll go back to Drake. Dennis, can you hear me?
Yes, I can Mayor.
All right, welcome, and thank you for your letter Dennis.
Thank you Mayor Gear. Um, this is Dennis Clark, three eight zero five M Avenue. Uh, followed the city council's discussion about street maintenance for six years. The city has come a long way in addressing the backlog, backlog of street maintenance caused by the Great Recession. Lessons were learned by the mayor and council about the consequences of falling behind in maintaining streets. Commitments to sustain funding were made by city council. And in twenty eighteen, the public voted to increase sales tax by two tenths of a percent to add more funds to this vital work. Using funds from multiple sources, street quality has stabilized thanks to the hard work by city staff. Twenty twenty saw one point eight million invested in maintaining this essential public asset. Our transportation infrastructure truly is a top priority, and a wise course would be to maintain the same investment level in the twenty twenty-one budget. Adjusted for inflation, this would be essentially the one point nine million currently proposed. I strongly support this investment in our public infrastructure. Thank you for your consideration and your service.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? All right, we'll move on then. Um, Drake Elliott, you have your hand up? Drake, can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can, sorry, I was having trouble, I'm muting it.
Okay, so you have, you have comments on the budget this evening?
Yes, my first comment is, are we, is the budget being done in numerous parts? As in, is this meeting dedicating to part of the entire budget and next meeting another part, or is it all being discussed today?
It's all being discussed.
The entirety of the budget, so there isn't a, a, a specific budget next weekend.
No, we've done, we've done, we've done the parts, and now we're doing, we're discussing the budget as a whole.
Okay. Well, in that case, then I'll just jump straight into it. Um, one of my main concerns is in the wake of these protests involving police reform, I'm curious in which, what steps are we going to take as a city to do that? It seems that we're hiring three new officers whilst cutting other aspects of the city. Um, I, as a citizen of Anacortes, do not agree with that and would far rather see that money spent on mo- mental health and housing. I'm curious as to seeing what say we as a city are going to have in that, and if that's gonna be open other than just this evening.
Can you state your last statement? You're curious what?
What say we as citizens of Anacortes will have in redirecting funds from the police budget, and if that is only occurring on this evening?
Well, tonight we're taking, you know, this is a public hearing, so we're taking comments from the public. And we're, we're, we're gonna do that again next week.
Okay, so that was, my question was-
Yeah, and then the council is then working, you know, they're, they're looking at the whole picture, including public comments.
Okay.
And they're studying the budget at length.
All right, that answers my first question, which was just wondering if there was time. Next, if next week there was additionally gonna be an open discussion about the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay, awesome, that was my-
All right. Thank you Drake.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, the next person wants to comment on the budget is Rochelle. Rochelle, can you hear me?
I, I, I can hear you guys now. My, uh, comment was gonna be very similar to Drake's, is wondering if, if we still had time to comment next week. And also, um, just the fact that I think that our, our money hiring the three new police officers is, uh, being spent horribly and that we should spend it on, again, mental health, housing, and definitely social workers to be called when needed instead of sending out police. Um, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say on that, and I will study more on the issues and call back next week.
Uh, Mayor Gear, I have a question for Rochelle to ask her. Would she say her last name?
My last name is Kay Aloha.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you Rochelle. All right, the final, the next speaker we have is, um, um, Kayla. Kayla, are you there? Can you hear me?
Hi, yes. So, um, my comment is also about the police budget, um, just as Drake and Rochelle. And I, I don't believe that we should be allocating funds to the police for, to fill, uh, three new positions. I mean, it makes no sense. The, most of our problems, it seems, in this community are more mental health issues and, you know, um, things that could be handled by, um, you know, social workers that actually have degrees, and it's their profession. And not, you know, police that have, you know, around six months of training and then, you know, put on to these social issues.
Thank you Kayla. All right, is, does anyone else have a comment tonight on the budget for the council? Okay.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Hogland.
I just wanted to, one last point, um, the draft budget is loaded on the city's website under the finance webpage, uh, and my direct contact information is there, uh, as well. I'd be happy to, uh, entertain any, any questions directly that anybody may have.
So, council, do you have questions tonight, um, or just things you want to discuss that aren't in the budget? Are you still in the study mode?
Um, Mayor Gear, this is Anthony.
Eric Young.
Yes, um, you know, no, I'm still studying the budget. I, um, I would suggest though to those, um, you know, speakers that spoke up about, uh, concerns, I would suggest that they also reach out to Mr. Hogland to see if there are details within the budget, uh, for each of the departments that they have concerned about to see if there's something tangible or something that they would like to suggest. That allows it to come forward to us and also create an opportunity for us to discuss that as well. Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Carter.
Just from my own knowledge, these aren't three new positions within the police department, correct? They're just backfilling who we have lost.
Correct.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
And I think to expand on that a little bit, two of them are officers and one of them is a records clerk. But, um, I, I think that the entire council would benefit from the presentation that we received at the council finance committee meeting last week. Um, because it really helped describe where the money is going and what amount of revenue is coming in, and the difference between those. When we get the entire budget in a spreadsheet with thousands of lines, it's quite difficult to determine all that information. So, just in summary, our projected revenues for twenty twenty-one are up two hundred thousand dollars. Our projected expenditures are up nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Our, our salaries and wages, plus the overtime, plus the volunteer wages, plus personnel benefits, are up more than a million dollars. Um, and we just don't have the revenue to cover all of that. And we do have these seventeen unfilled positions in the budget, um, that are, that are being funded by the budget, even though apparently the concept is to hold those positions open to accommodate our cash flow needs in twenty twenty-one. Um, but it seems to me that the question, and, and maybe we have made a mistake here in deciding to do a one-year budget, rather than a two-year budget like we had before. Because it seems to me that we need to be planning not just for twenty twenty-one, but for twenty twenty-two as well. And I, I would like us to know that we have, um, if we have to, a plan to take money from the equipment rental and repair fund, and to take money from the pavement management fund for one year, and then make those funds whole in the following year, which is gonna be doubly difficult because we need to spend that same amount of money again, plus the money that we, uh, borrowed in twenty twenty-one. So, it, I, I, I don't, I don't see how we get there from here. I think that the numbers are just too big. And that we need to make some hard choices, um, some hard cuts to get there. I, I don't necessarily advocate leaving those police officer positions unfilled. I think we need to, we need to take the unfilled positions one at a time and work through them. Um, there's library positions that are unfilled, there's parks positions that are unfilled. All of them, I can make an argument to keep. Um, but at the same time, we, we have to cut something. I, I don't, I don't, I don't see how we can make it through this year and then the following year, and come out of this in twenty twenty-three where we were in twenty twenty, unless we make some harder choices now.
Mayor Gear?
Yeah, Mr. Young, and then I have a comment, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hogland a question. Go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Walters on that, uh, I think the benefit of that presentation would be something that I can speak for myself would, uh, greatly appreciate because I think that it would give a bit more depth to the discussion that we're having collectively and what the issues are surrounding it. And I think this, that this point that Mr. Walters made also speaks to the point of sometimes in, um, particularly finance department where we're wrestling with issues such as this, it's important that somehow the rest of council outside of those members that are directly on that committee somehow get access to that thing, that discussion. Even though I understand that, uh, we can't have a quorum, I, I get that. What I'm talking about is the knowledge that comes out of that that is enlightening for all of us. I think that, that if we could find a way to do that, particularly, uh, with the finance department and maybe even public works, that would benefit me and I would like to believe other members of council as well. So, if we could talk about that at some point, I would greatly appreciate it.
So, what I was gonna suggest is that the beginning of the meeting, the finance part of the meeting next week Steve, you maybe take thirty minutes and do a rerun of that exact meeting that we had because Ryan is absolutely right. I walked away with a whole, it's just a really, gives you the whole picture. You understand where the hard choices have to be made, and, um, we could do it for the, the body of the whole and the community. Everyone sees what we're dealing with. Um, um, so that's my request of you for next Monday night.
Yeah, absolutely. That, I, I think, uh, last week we kind of got into a, you know, pavement versus fiber discussion and, and you need the, kind of a holistic view of the budget, which we did on, uh, at finance committee last week. And I'll be happy to go through that on, uh, next week.
And I think it'll, it'll just help all of us be crystal clear on what our challenges are and, and really what, what our workarounds are too. So, it's not, and we don't have enough money, but it's not all doom and gloom either.
Mayor Gear.
Christine, and Christine and then Carolyn.
Thanks Mayor Gear. So, just to clarify, I would, I totally agree with, um, Mr. Young and Walters. I would really benefit, um, from that summary. But also just to clarify that we will, there's enough time that we can have that summary presented to us next week, and then we'll have time to kind of go back, think it through, and then come back with additional comments. That's correct, right?
We have time to December to do a final budget, so we've got enough time.
Good, and I also think members of the public would probably appreciate, um, a little more clarity about, based on our last discussion this previous week. Um, just so we're all on the same page, because there are, I mean, we are going to have major impacts and, and we can't, we, it's, it's best to have a full understanding of it. Thank you.
Ms. Molton.
Um, thank you. I was going to say the same thing, that I think the community at large would greatly benefit also, and I love the idea of having this kind of information out there for all of us to share. Thanks.
And, and to Mr. Walters' point, even though we're not officially doing a budget for twenty twenty-two, I think if we could think about twenty twenty-two, we're making these decisions, and there were, you know, we've kind of planned out the next steps, because as we all know, twelve months goes by in a blink of an eye, and, uh, it would be, so I think we can accomplish both with actually just doing a one-year budget that's been planning for the next year. Okay, is there something for us tonight?
Yeah, Mayor Gear.
Yes.
Um, uh, to, to rea- reiterate what other folks have said, Steve's, the, the presentation and the discussion in the finance committee was terrific. It was tremendously detailed and it really helped me understand the, the full complexity that we're facing. So, I, I think we ought to probably plan on at least an hour for, I mean-
We have room for that next week.
Okay, great. Yeah, and then maybe if we can also stick some time on in, later in November for, like, discussing that sort of second year, what, and if possible, kind of model out a couple scenarios, what it could look like.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller and then Mr. Walters.
Uh, I con- I concur with, uh, all of that and look, look forward to that hours, hour-long discussion. Um, but, but also in previous budgets, Mayor, you, you'd kind of, there, or maybe Mr. Hogland, we let, we put out a clear, um, you know, I hate to be the FTE guy, but a, kind of a clear picture of, of what, what those, those, uh, positions are. So, uh, again, I think that was a good, sounds like that was a good discussion at finance about maybe seventeen positions that are kind of unfilled. That's the kind of discussion that we should, we should be engaged in as a- That's the kind of discussion that we should, we should be engaged in as a council about, you know, giving that input to the mayor on which ones we think are, are most important and which ones that maybe should be left off the budget rather than just unfilled positions in the budget. Because ultimately, we, as of now, and Mr. Walters brought up another good point last week about that we're just voting on ordinance thirty seventy-eight is pretty much all you're asking us to do in the end of all this. But maybe we need a, need a little bit more than just that.
Mr. Walters.
The presentation that we're going to be getting next week, I think would also benefit from having some of the numbers broken out by our general revenue funds versus utility funds and other non-discretionary funding sources. The materials that Mr. Hoagland presented to us in the finance committee were all aggregated, all the salaries together, those kinds of things. But if we tease out the utilities, which are largely paying for themselves, and just look at the more discretionary expenses, I think we'll be in a better position to, to see what the real impacts are and focus in on that. And then I think we would also benefit, Mr. Hoagland had emailed out a spreadsheet with a list of seventeen positions, but it'd be great if the list could be included as well, along with their wages and benefits on the slides, so that we could be looking at that and the impact of preserving or not preserving those positions. And then finally, there, there's also this issue of cash flow, and I, I think that it would be very useful if Mr. Hoagland could talk about that and make sure that we're not forgetting about that as we move through the discussion. Because we need to not, not only have enough money at the end of the year to pay everybody, but also enough money every month of the year to pay everybody. So I think those three things would be useful benefit, beneficial additions.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments from the coun, uh, council on the budget this evening? Or from members of the community want to comment on the budget tonight? Okay, I don't see any other hands up on the budget. Council, you're ready to go to work next week. We'll, we'll really dive in, spend some time on that. All right, so at this time, I'm going to leave the public hearing open and we'll continue that till November ninth on the 2021 budget. And we're going to go now into agenda item number six. And the first item under other business is our closed record decision hearing, LPS-2020-0001, the Crossing cottages preliminary plot and site plan. And we have members of the public here that are parties of record on that hearing. And we have them, but we have Libby first. Libby, do you want to introduce this to the council?
Yes, good evening and thank you, Mayor Gear. I'm going to share my screen here. And can everybody see my screen? Okay, thank you. So yes, good evening, everyone. The item before council this evening is a closed record decision hearing on city file number LPS 2020-0001, also known as the Crossing cottages, as I just told everyone. Staff intends first to present an overview of the project application and the review process to date, and followed by responding to any questions that the council may have. The applicant I know is also on the line and will be available to respond to questions and may al, may also want to add to the discussion. And as we know, there are also parties of record that will likely want to participate as we move forward this evening. Sorry about that. The applicant and landowner for this project are Anacopper LLC. The site location is at nineteen oh five Anacopper Mine Road located in the R2 zone. And the application type that the applicant is requesting approval of our preliminary unit lot subdivision to divide the site into twenty-one lots and four tracts and site plan review, site plan approval to develop eighteen-unit cottage housing development on a portion of the site. The project is utilizing consolidated application process. There are two, because of the two different permit types that are applied for, including the site plan review, which is typically a type-two administrative approval, and the preliminary long subdivision, which is typically a type-four city council review process. So both of those permit types are being reviewed through the type-four city council review process under the consolidated application processing provisions of our code. A quick overview of project history and public notice for this proposal. A pre-application meeting was held back a year ago, November nineteenth, twenty nineteen. There was a pre-application neighborhood meeting held on January sixteenth and February fourth, twenty twenty. A complete application was submitted on February twenty-first, twenty twenty. Notice of application with the required twenty-one-day public comment period was issued and the proposal was routed to city departments and agencies of jurisdiction for review and comment. The city issued a SEPA threshold determination of non-significance and there were no appeals of that threshold determination. There was a notice of public hearing for the planning commission meeting and city council's closed record decision hearing. The planning commission held a open record public hearing on September twenty-third, twenty twenty, and at that meeting recommended approval of the project subject to conditions to the city council. This is a slide that's just showing the project record. These are the exhibits that were included in the record to the planning commission. And the entire planning commission packet plus the planning commission staff slide presentation and draft minutes and the planning commission recommendation are included in city council's packet for this evening. The project site is located in central western Anacortes, just east of the Anacortes Airport and west and north, yeah, west and north of Rock Ridge and Little Cranberry Lake, the Anacortes community forest lands, represented by the black star on the map there. The site has a residential load done to the two future land use designation in the Anacortes comprehensive plan and it is zoned R2. The, this particular area of Anacortes has changed quite a bit over the last forty years. The, these are aerial photos that are showing the development of the area over the, over time and with the site outlined in green on each of the slides. The last twenty-five years has seen development of the Copper Pond neighborhood, which is located just to the north of the project site, the Meadows, which is to the east, and Eagle Ridge and Rock Ridge, starting in around two thousand and seven, located to the south and the southeast. This slide is showing the existing project site conditions. The site is shown in, shown here bounded by red. The site's approximately five point two acres in size. It contains an existing single-family residence and detached outbuildings. The upland portion of the site, the eastern portion, has quite a few Douglas fir trees and also pasture grass. The site slopes westward down to a category-three wetland that is located on the west portion of the site. Surrounding uses include mostly single-family detached, detached residences. Zoning is R2 to the north, the east, and the south. And then across Anacopper Mine Road to the west is Anacortes Airport again, along with the aeronautical zone and light manufacturing zones. The site currently has access from a driveway that comes off of Anacopper Mine Road, just to the north of the onsite wetlands. You can kind of see it in the upper northern portion of the site above those numbers, nineteen oh five. And it also abuts on the east side, and I'm sorry, there's so many layers here, it's hard to see the road names, but Meadows Lane abuts the site on the east and then Oregon Avenue is down to the south of the Panhandle portion of the site. This is just a, a plan that shows kind of an overview of the site development plan, superimposed over the existing aerial photo of the property. The cottage units are proposed to go in the northern portion of the site and then there would be three standard-sized, single-family lots along the Panhandle portion on the south part of the site. This is the cottage site plan proposed. It is laid out in accordance with the residential use standards for cottage housing in the Anacortes municipal code, section nineteen point forty-three point oh one O D. And that section contains specific site and building design standards for cottage development. This particular plan is showing eighteen cottage units, what those colored boxes are that you see, the blue, yellow, red, and, and green. Each of the units will have a maximum size limit of twelve hundred square feet and a maximum height of twenty-five feet with specific standards for anything above eighteen feet. They must, the roof must be pitched at a minimum of six to twelve. And each unit is also proposed to ha, include a three hundred square foot attached one-car garage. And that's the, on each box, you can see the yellow smaller box that's representing the garage for each unit. Open space is provided in accordance with the code. Private open space is required at two hundred square feet per unit and common open space is required at four hundred square feet per unit. Parking, off-street parking is also provided in accordance with the code. The minimum required is one and a half spaces per unit for residents and one space, that should say space, I'm sorry, per four units for guest parking. Internal site circulation is proposed via this private drive that will enter off of Meadows Lane and Oregon Ave to the east and come into a minimum twenty-foot wide shared drive aisle that has access to each of the four, each of the unit clusters. There'll also be a five-foot wide sidewalk along one side of the street and there are pedestrian paths located throughout the development to provide for internal site circulation.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Ms. Molton.
Ms. Grange, I just have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Thanks. Is the garage square footage included in the overall cottage footage of the maximum of twelve hundred square feet?
It is not.
So it's twelve hundred square feet for a cottage plus three hundred square feet for a garage?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's allowed by code?
Yes.
Okay, and then my other question is about the sidewalks. So I'm curious as to why they're in some areas and not others. So will people be, I guess that's my question, why are sidewalks partial in the development?
I'll try to get my laser pen here. So, uh, thank you for that question, Ms. Molton. The, there are some specific internal site circulation standards for cottage housing and multifamily and townhouse type developments in the code. And that particular section requires a sidewalk on one side of a minimum twenty-foot wide drive aisle. And then it allows for other aspects of site circulation to be provided via other means. And in this particular instance, there are walkways that go around the common open space areas that will be connected to the entryways of each of the units to provide for pedestrian access back out to the street and the, the main sidewalk on the east side here. So you can see a, a walkway here. I'm sorry, where are you going to say?
Oh, sure. No, I think those are, are great. I was just thinking, say that I'm walking home from the ATFL and I'm coming from the east and so I guess if I'm walking to lot fifteen, I walk the sidewalk part of the way. I mean, I imagine people aren't going to be driving very fast, but it's just, you're just required to walk in the, it seems that you're retired, required to walk in the street. And I'm just making, for me, that's like not ideal, I, but.
So if you, if you were going to access lot fifteen, you would come on this five-foot wide sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
Along this road to a crosswalk that would come across here, up to this location, another crosswalk, and then on this walkway to your front entryway?
Okay, so everything does ultimately connect by a path?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Yes, um, just, I really appreciated how you were able to show that to us, Ms. Grange, just because the front side of the house gives access to, ev, every front side of the house has access to a pathway and that was the point that you were making about showing that. And I appreciate that. Thank you. That makes it clear. I had a similar question to Ms. Molton and, but you answered it very well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So moving on, there are also specific building design standards for cottage units and that's sort of along the lines of, of what you were just discussing, Mr. Young. There's a requirement for cottages that are abutting the common open space areas to have a front porch facing the common open space. And the site plan doesn't show it very well, but those front porches would be connected then directly to these pedestrian walkways. This is a, an example of cottage elevation that is proposed for, for this particular development. Now, Mr. Strandberg can correct me if I'm wrong. I think they each have about a nine hundred square foot footprint and then a small upper story. This slide is showing the unit lot subdivision component to the project. So the proposal is to divide the overall site into twenty-one lots, which would include eighteen unit lots that would take up the cottage housing development portion of the site. So each individual cottage would be on its own unit lot. And then there are proposed three standard, single-family lots along the, the southern Panhandle portion of the property that would each meet the minimum seventy-five hundred square foot threshold for the R2 zone. There are four tracts that are proposed as part of the preliminary plot. There is the tract A would be the wetland and, and buffer area. So the wetland is in this area. Tract A would be this entire western portion. I think it's about two and a half acres of the site. There is a stormwater detention tract, tract B located here along with some conveyance swales. swales. And the private access track is all encompassed in track C. And then track D includes all of the common open space areas. So there will be covenants and easements and requirements on the face of the plat map that require maintenance of all of these areas by the individual lot owners as a homeowners' association to make sure that all of these common open spaces remain maintained for their intended purpose and also access and utilities, et cetera, within that road track. Stormwater for the proposal is proposed to be routed to track B, which will include a detention pond. And that water will be treated and detained prior to being released back into the wetland buffer, in accordance with the Department of Ecology standards for outfalls into wetland buffer area. Some of the stormwater is proposed to be dispersed into the wetland buffer along the south portion of the site here. And then stormwater from Oregon Avenue in these southern lots here will go into the existing city storm system that goes to a detention pond in Rock Ridge. Wanted to talk about critical areas a little bit. This slide is showing, I'm just trying to manage all the different things I have on my screen here. And this, this slide is showing, again, the delineated wetland area and then the buffer, which is a hundred and ten foot. A critical areas report was submitted, and was prepared and submitted for the application by a qualified professional in accordance with the city's critical areas regulations under Chapter seventeen seventy. And that report identified the one category three wetland. And that records a hundred and ten foot standard buffer. The report also identified a category two wetland located offsite across Anna Copper Mine Road to the west of the site. And there's a culvert underneath Anna Copper Mine Road that exists between the two wetland areas. City staff did consult with the Department of Ecology on this particular project's wetland report, because we knew that there was a lot of concern from neighbors in the community about the designation of these wetlands and buffers in this area. The Department of Ecology did review the critical areas report submitted by the project applicant and concurred with that project biologist categorization of the, of this wetland, that it is a category three wetland and separate from the wetland to the west, which is consistent with the Department of Ecology guidance for categorizing wetlands.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. McGiegle.
A very quick question. Yes, Ms. Grange, the, are there any regulations or do they, did they comment on any regulation about having a, a non-paved, like woodchip path within the wetland buffer? Like what are, what are the regulations for that being in there?
Um, the Department of Ecology does have guidance for those types of passive recreation facilities within a wetland buffer. And the Anna Cortis Municipal Code does allow for trails within buffers as well. There are conditions that are included in the SEPA threshold determination, the MDNS for this particular project, that will require that the buffer, or excuse me, that the trail be located within the outer twenty-five percent of the buffer, that it be limited to six feet in width, and that it be made, constructed of a pervious material.
Okay.
And so, yeah, SASS recommendation was to follow the Department of Ecology guidance for, for those types of facilities.
Okay, and the picture, as it's depicted here, follows that guidance, like it's within the outer twenty-five percent?
There will likely need to be revisions to the location on the site plan.
Okay.
To follow those, those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Geer? Um, Ms. Molton and Mr. Miller.
Just to follow up on that question about the, the trail, I referenced the comp plan transportation element, and the policy T two-point-one-zero encourages local street connections and walkways between existing neighborhoods and new developments to provide an efficient network of travel route options for pedestrians and bicycles. And this doesn't seem like a bicycle trail option for me, but I would really appreciate consideration of extending that trail southward to the end of the access road and making that sort of a neighborhood greenway type trail that people from the Meadows Lane and other areas east could walk through, that it would be a public amenity, that they could go down the access road and onto the trail, and then come out and skip the most narrow, dangerous section of Anna Copper, and then, you know, proceed now, north to another neighborhood. I just think that would be a really great option that would, that would jive well with our, with our comp plan.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Miller and then Mr. Walters.
Thanks, Mayor. Two questions, one on the, the consultation with ecology. That was because there's a cat, category-two wetland across the street, and you were making sure that they weren't connected, or, or the, or to make sure that the developer had a legitimate evaluation. I'm not, I'm not sure what the reason for the consult was.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Yeah, the, the reason for the consultation was because there's some pretty technical guidance in the, in the rating system for, for wetlands, that we wanted to make sure that the, the wetland report was, was getting it correct and following that particular guidance.
Yeah, I'm just making sure we're not putting it, you know, they're, they're already hiring a, an expert wetland person to, to evaluate that. And if you're putting an additional, an additional hurdle for them to jump through, that, that concerns me a little bit, but it does sound like there's enough, there's enough complication in there that it was, it was worthwhile to do. Uh, and then I think my que, my other question is answered just by the picture in the wetlands. The reason the developer did not use the existing access from Anna Copper Road was probably because of the wetlands and the retention pond site. That, is that a fair, fair statement?
Uh, yes, the, correct, the wetlands and the, and the buffer there, and also just the, the location of the access coming onto Anna Copper Mine Road, I think were all complicating factors and adding a new street there.
Thank you.
Mr. Walters?
Um, to get back to Ms. Molton's suggestion, if I understood it correctly, it was to require extension of that trail down to the southerly access road on this drawing. If, if that's what she was talking about, I, I think that's a really good suggestion that will facilitate more than just this community's access through there to Anna Copper. And I think that we should require that. It's also relatively, you know, low cost, really, considering.
Thank you.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young.
Yes, um, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Molton and Mr. Walters' idea. I think that, you know, it should be considered, if at all possible. I think it would facilitate justice continuity, if possible, but I'm sure cost will be part of the consideration. But I really would like to see that if we can make it happen. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions for Libby on that? Okay, go ahead, Libby.
Thank you, Mayor Geer. And, and I think it would be good to hear from the project applicant when I'm finished with the presentation to, to see if there are any thoughts from him on that particular item.
Okay, and then after that, I'll open it up to the parties of record. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll try to get through these.
Oh, you're fine.
As quick as I can, thank you. Um, so I was just going to mention that, yes, the, so the, the, there are several buff, wetland buffer uses that are proposed as a part of the project. We've already talked about the woodchip trail. Uh, there's also a stormwater outfall that will release the treated stormwater from the ponds here. I think it's, I think that's what this is here, in accordance with DOE Stormwater and Wetland Protection requirements. And there is some proposed buffer enhancement, which would include removing that gravel driveway and restoring the buffer section, and also adding that pedestrian trail that we've talked about, letting the existing mowed pasture grass that comprises this existing, the, the buffer currently, letting that grow up, and also planting nineteen Douglas fir trees. And in addition, adding a more dense buffer planting along the, this is about a hundred and seventy feet long by thirty feet, I believe. So this area, the green with the hatch marks here would be some increased density buffer planting to provide some additional habitat value and, and protection to the wetland itself. Transportation facilities in the area. So the, the project does include completing the connection between Oregon Avenue and Meadows Lane. And I'm sorry, this is pretty small down here, but here's the project site, you can see my cursor on it. And so here's Anna Copper Mine Road, where it turns into Pennsylvania, and then West Twelfth Street. So Oregon Avenue currently terminates right here. And then Meadows Lane currently terminates right here. So this project would complete that connection between the two public roads, including twenty feet of pavement and a five-foot sidewalk, six-foot sidewalk, and a six-foot landscape strip on one side. And then when the adjacent property to the east develops, the remaining improvements would be put in place upon development of that, of that property. So all site access will come off of that new portion of Oregon Avenue. Vehicular access is proposed to be eliminated, as we've discussed, from Anna Copper Mine Road. And I was just going to mention that there was a traffic report that was prepared by a qualified professional that looked at, looked at the existing transportation system within the, within the area, looked at concurrency requirements, safety, site distance at intersections and driveways and other issues that related to the proposal's impacts on the surrounding transportation facilities. And the Public Works Engineering Department reviewed that report and concurred with its findings, that the proposal does meet concurrency requirements. And now I'll, I'll try to zoom through these pretty fast, but because we didn't get to have a site visit, I just wanted to provide some site photos for you to kind of get an idea of, of what the, the project looks like, the site looks like. So this orange, orange dot here represents where I'm standing, and then the arrow, the blue arrow, shows the direction that the photo's being taken. So this first photo here is coming in on the gravel driveway to the site, looking east towards the access to this existing single-family residence. This photo is looking to the southwest, towards the wetlands. So here's the wetland area, and then you can see that this entire buffer is mowed. There are a couple of trees still there, existing. Um, this photo is, again, looking in towards the, the wetland area, and then in the distance back here is Anna Copper Mine Road. This is looking across the, the buffer to the south at the Eagle Ridge Development. So that's what this one is here. That was, I think, developed in about two thousand and seven. So this house that you can see here is this twenty-one oh-six property here. And then this photo is turning slightly and looking up across the, the mowed lawn slash buffer area back towards the existing residence on the, on the property. And then here, we're looking at a, this is a, I think it's thirty-foot wide drainage tract that was, I'm at the swale, that was developed as part of the copper pond development to the north of the property. So there's the stormwater tract. This is taken from the top of the driveway, looking back towards the, the driveway to the west, shows some of those fir trees, Douglas fir trees. And then this is a, a photo of the existing single-family residence and a detached garage that will be removed as part of the project. And then again, moving farther upland and looking east towards some of the adjacent residentially developed properties. And then here, we're looking south down the, the Panhandle toward Oregon Avenue. And the house that you see here, I believe, is, is this house on Pennsylvania Court, or the Eagle Ridge Development. Here, we're just getting a little bit closer so you can kind of see where the, the new road section would come through and connect with Meadows Lane here from Oregon Avenue. And then this section here would be the new standard-sized, single-family homes. And then finally, this is just looking to the east at the improved portion of, of the existing Meadows Lane, which is fully developed sidewalk from both sides.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters?
So Libby, will that new connection from Meadows Lane southward match the existing development of Meadows Lane with sidewalks on both sides?
The connection will have sidewalk on one side.
Is it the same width?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, Mr. Lang may know the answer to that, but my guess is that it probably, the existing sidewalks are probably five feet, and, um, our standards have changed to be six feet. I don't know if Mr. Lang is available to chime in?
Is the roadway the same length or width?
The roadway is wider, so it will have to tie in, the, the new section will be twenty feet of pavement. And I'm sorry, I don't know the exact measurement of, of Meadows Lane currently.
Mr. Lang has joined us.
Yeah, so the, the new sidewalk is going to be six feet on Oregon Avenue. And then the road width is twenty, will not match the existing width of, it'll flare into the existing width of the meadows. And then when that subdivision on the east side develops out, then that's when everything will be the, the approximate width of what you see up in the meadows.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I had a similar question, but the, the other side.
Yeah, I, I had a similar question, but, uh, the, the other side, Oregon Avenue on the other side, uh, because that's a newer development, so I would imagine that's, uh, I believe it has sidewalks on both sides. So I, I'm not sure, uh, which, I'm not sure which way we're requiring the, uh, developer to go.
So I, I guess, what's, what's the question? I, I don't know how to answer that.
The, the que, the question is, are you requiring the developer to match Oregon or requiring the developer to match, uh, the meadows? Or is it, is it, is it some new, new requirement?
No, it'll, it'll match at both ends, north and south.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walter.
Um, are, are we expecting that the empty lot to the east there will develop the other side of the street sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, so the, eventually the road will look continuously congruent, I guess, except for the extra put a sidewalk because our standard for sidewalk is increased in width. Is that an accurate summary?
Y- yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Lang while we have him here? All right, Ms. Graves, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to show, this is a tree removal plan. So the, uh, yellow highlighted marks on this plan are showing existing trees that are proposed to be removed. And this is the tree preservation plan.
Mayor here.
Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Um, thank you. I just want to mention this as a general topic to consider. The tree, our tree preservation plan, um, is not a good one that we have at this city. And I just want to say publicly that that needs to be addressed. What it says right now in chapter sixteen point five zero point zero eight zero, standards for trees to be retained, is that healthy trees over twenty-four inches in diameter shall be priority trees for preservation. And here we have numerous trees that are twelve to forty inches in diameter, including nineteen full-grown Douglas fir that will be removed legally, certainly. Um, but what our code goes on to say is priority trees should only be removed if their retention is not feasible, e.g., within footprint of likely future building area and not reasonable to modify building size or footprint, which is the case, but my point is this, we need to address this tree preservation ordinance because it basically means that if we want to put buildings somewhere and that's where we want to put them, we can take the trees. I don't feel that our trees are protected at all. So I have no, regarding this, it's not regarding this development, but I thought it would be an opportunity to mention that that needs some work. So I'm going to be looking to address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the minimum, uh, tree unit credits required according to our tree preservation code is two hundred and eight. And through retention of existing trees, the, the project will meet the, uh, minimum requirement and exceed it. Um, they will receive two hundred and thirty-four tree credit, tree unit credits. So they, they need that section of the code. Um, this is the landscaping plan that is showing, uh, that the proposal will exceed the minimum landscape requirement of twenty percent. There is a required, uh, five-foot wide, um, landscape buffer between this access road and the south, the property to the south. Um, and then of course, this is showing the proposed Douglas fir to be planted within the wetland buffer, the enhancement area, and then, um, various plantings and vegetation throughout the, the common open space areas, the detention ponds and, um, perimeters of the project. This is a quick summary of, um, public comments that we've received. And, um, primarily those are addressed to concern about compatibility with the existing neighborhoods, a concern about cottage, the cottage housing within the, the neighborhood, a tree removal, wetland impacts, traffic impacts, um, stormwater, project lighting, and, um, also project conformance with the standard. And all of these items are, um, attempted to be addressed within the staff report. I don't know if we, maybe I'll just keep going for now and we can come back if we have questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and then this is a slide that's attempting to show the, the criteria, the review criteria for the two different permit types that the applicant is seeking. Um, the preliminary land division code, uh, is under nineteen thirty-two oh four oh, and these are the review criteria. And then the site plan review criteria are in nineteen thirty oh four oh. And based on staff review of the application materials, staff recommended approval with conditions of the project to the planning commission. Um, and then the planning commission, after a public hearing, recommended approval, uh, subject to those same conditions to the city council. Um, the recommended conditions, it's quite a lengthy list and they include, uh, standard boilerplate conditions that are added to, uh, you know, many types of different projects and then also project-specific conditions. I think, um, in the interest of time, maybe it's better if I hold off going through these right now. Um, and then maybe we can come back to them if there are specific questions. But there are about forty different, um, recommended conditions of approval for, for council's consideration. And with that, uh, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any additional questions there might be. And I know that the applicant's on the line and then of course, uh, parties of record as well are, are able to participate this evening. Thank you.
So does the applicant have anything he'd like to share before we go to the parties of record? I see a hand up. Nels, Nels Stramberg?
Uh, I'm here, Nels Stramberg, can you hear me?
Welcome, yes, we can hear you.
Uh, you know, this is a fairly complicated project. I think, um, it was a great factual presentation, uh, that Ms. Graves put on. So I, I'll hold my comments, um, if there's any questions, um, either now or, or later on.
Okay, thank you, Nels.
Thank you.
All right, so then I'll go to the participants and we have, I'll just go down the, the folks identified. So I have Carol and I have Sherry and I have Sean and Susan. It looks like it's party of records. I'll start with those and if there's anyone I've missed, let me know that's a party of record. We'll start with Sean, Sean Patrick. Can you hear me, Sean?
Uh, I, I can hear you, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, that's, that's fantastic for a thirteen-year-old computer, but nonetheless, I'll, I'll go here.
Good, good job, computer.
Uh, my concern, as I denoted in my letter, is basically, uh, this area is all single-family homes and the cottages, uh, they just don't aesthetically match the surrounding area. And my biggest concern with that is, is just the density itself in terms of automobiles. Um, there are times here on Meadows Lane where I can't even park anywhere near my house. I've actually got to park over in Copper Pond. And by adding these cottages, I know human beings and human beings, uh, have to get to work. They have errands to run and they will have usually more than one point five cars. And that means that those folks who will have CCNRs, uh, they can't park in their neighborhood necessarily, but they will be parking in my neighborhood, Meadows Lane. That's my first concern. The second concern is, what did not come up in the presentation is the lot that is immediately, immediately to the south of me, I live at twenty-one thirteen Meadows Lane, um, it is a wetland. Um, it doesn't show in the presentation, but that wetland, uh, takes on a considerable amount of water. Uh, it gets more and more water as Rock Ridge gets more and more developed. That wetland that's behind me there, it trickles through this project and it goes down into the pond. And I did address that in my letter, that, um, if this development goes through, I'm concerned that the water is not going to percolate through that soil anymore. It's in fact going to be percolating into my crawl space. So, uh, I'm very concerned about it, my neighbors are concerned about it. And, uh, I'll just leave it at that, those were my concerns, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Carol Bardin.
Hey, I'm here.
You're welcome.
Hi. So, let's see, before you start the countdown, I'm going to probably have to go a little bit beyond three minutes because I have a lot of territory to cover. And since Mr. Patrick had a minute and fifteen left, I'm going to use his extra minute.
Well, let's see how you do with three and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. Um, the GRET report in twenty fifteen, uh, said this is one contiguous wetland that should have twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five foot buffers and nothing has changed since that report document with the wetland. The wetland on either, either side of Anna Copper Mine Road has flow between them, as was already pointed out by the wetland delineations and others who have been to and documented the hydraulic connections. It's not two wetlands, never was two separate wetlands. As a matter of fact, this wetland does not receive the surface water connections it used to receive due to roads, buildings, houses, diversions, filling and grading, as Patrick, Mr. Patrick just said. To call this wetland two separate wetlands is an error on the part of the land developer in the city for land development purposes. Residents simply don't agree with the classification of this wetland as a category-three wetland with one ten, one hundred and ten foot buffers. Both sides of the port side and the east side of this wetland is one wetland and not two separate wetlands. Um, if this project goes ahead, the site plan should reduce, should be reduced in the amount of cottages to keep the wetland and buffers intact. Let's say from eighteen to nine cottages with larger buffers of two hundred and twenty-five feet. The second point is residents living on Copper Pond Road have stated that their homes, at least three homes, have been impacted by the hydrology of Copper Pond Wetland and buildings so close to it. This has been documented and provided to the city. With the addition of a new built detention pond, which has never had an impact study done to know how it will affect these homes, how will this project deal with those existing impacts and new impacts to those homeowners? Uh, how about the city conduct an impact study of a detention pond so close to the existing homes and wetlands? So we're asking the city to do this before any permit is issued for the project. Point number three, there's never been any wildlife species monitoring report that includes what mammals, birds, raptors, aquatic life, priority habitat species utilize this wetland, live here, migrate to and from it. And we don't know if there are any listed species of sensitive, threatened, rare and endangered plants and animals. This has not been documented by Department of Fish and Wildlife and should be, as I've spoken to these biologists recently, and they say no study has been conducted for the site as it pertains to priority habitat species. These biologists said they would be happy to conduct this monitoring study if asked. So we're asking that this is done before any project permits issues, is issued. I've seen a lot of different wildlife, um, you probably have too if you've walked here or lived around here. I could name them, um, I don't want to lose some time here. Um, number four, should this project be approved in the M DNS mitigation plan? We're asking the city to include the following, reduce the amount of cottages from eighteen to nine. This would be better project with larger setback with fewer cottages with a more intact wetland and its buffer. In addition, several large irreplaceable Doug fir trees would not need to be removed if the project was reduced in size. Um, no pesticides, herbicides or insecticides should be allowed on the site ever. It's just too close to the wetland and will cause problems for birds, waterfowl, mammals and a host of other frequent wildlife and aquatic species in and around the wetland. No truck access to and from the western access point off Anna Copper Mine Road for developing, logging the site. Access from this point would be a code violation within the hundred and ten foot buffer. Um, no trail, um, or access, you're in a hundred and ten foot buffer with the trail, that's a code violation. And, um, it's just more impacts. The western side fence, um, that's proposed, the deer and wildlife and other species need free, free access to the wetland from the western side of the property. This is a corridor for wildlife, no fence to keep wildlife out and restrict, restrict their use. And I'm almost done.
You're fine.
The tree ma, the tree matrix, there needs to be more wetland hydrophytes added to the tree matrix, including but not limited to native species such as pyreia, willow, skunk cabbage, rush, sedge, cattail, bull rush and hemlock to list a few. Adding more native trees to the site overall would be a good idea since several large Doug fir trees would be removed, as well as a hundred and fifty-foot tall big maple on the southeast side of the property where the single-family residences would be built. Should the project be reduced in size, less large forty diameter Doug fir trees would need to be, wouldn't, would not be removed. And also the trees lining the gravel road on the west side are within the hundred and ten foot buffer of the wetland and should not be removed. This is a code violation being when the, within the buffer again. Um, no mowing in the buffer ever. And also include a separate HOA for the sites, the residents will know what they need to abide by to keep the wetland and its wildlife and flora protected well beyond five years. A couple more things and I'm done. At Oregon Ave, the new section that would be built for access to and from this housing development, for those of us residents living on Pennsylvania Court and West 12th Street that I live on, we have an alley between our adjacent properties. We have had more large trucks, FedEx trucks, fast-driving cars and large RVs coming up and down our alley. We demand that due to this project and the traffic, be restricted to only emergency vehicles such as police, fire and ambulance and only said residents on either side of the alley to allow access to the alley. We access our backyards with our vehicles and lawn mowers to maintain our yards and fences. So we're asking that metal posts, two at each end, can be up and that should be put in, that could be uncoupled, be placed at either end of the alley to keep more traffic from being allowed up and down our alley. People from the crossings will be looking for a shortcut to Anna Copper Mine Road to avoid the roundabout. This is a must to keep our neighborhood quieter and safer for all the residents, pedestrians, kids and adults who bicycle and dog walkers who use the alley to get to Turgeon Park daily. And one more thing, and then I'm going to sum. Um, West 12th Street was built rather wide and it needs to be made narrower to decrease the size of all the vehicles and motorcycles that speed up and down our road. We ask that some kind of device and or painting they use to reduce the speed to and from the roundabout, it's insane. I almost got hit by a large truck just doing my gardening off the curb in my yard. In summary, the residents and I am asking the city to use its authority to honor and respect our neighborhood and community and locally significant wetland by completing what we, the existing residents, uh, asking to do for this proj, for this project if it's approved or not approved as is. None of the residents and neighbors want this large project, this dense project going in this area. It doesn't match our neighborhood. It's too dense and already impacted locally significant category-two wetland, as is the port side of this wetland, that's one wetland with two hundred and twenty-five foot buffers. So lastly, and again, the call of the wetland being a category-three wetland with hundred and ten foot buffers needs to be addressed as the port side of the wetland is a category-two with wetland with two hundred and twenty-five foot buffers. Those sides of this wetland's category-two wetland with two hundred and twenty-five foot buffers. So please keep in mind that if you don't live in this neighborhood, you more than likely would not like to see all this housing laid up right on top of the wetland water table and buffer with so dense a situation going on with traffic and people and roads.
Good call.
So that's pretty much what I wanted to say. Uh, the project is a, a nice project, but it's really in the wrong place or too dense for this small piece of land wetland. There's many important items to check off in your closed decision-making session. So thank you for hearing me and giving me a li, little extra time. I put a lot of effort into this as it's in my neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you, Carol, appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move on now to Sherry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, my name is Sherry and I live on the north end of Oregon Avenue where the sidewalk ends. where the sidewalk ends. First, I want to discuss density. Removing the wetland and the three single-family homes leaves about two-point-two-nine acres for just this cottage development. And per the municipal code nineteen dot four-two dot one hundred, when calculating density on parcels with fractions below one-half, the available acreage must be rounded down to the nearest whole number. Therefore, only sixteen cottages would be allowed to be built on two-point-two-nine acres because it's rounded down to two acres. This development plans for eighteen, exceeding the maximum allotment on that two-point-two-nine acres. Secondly, parking is a huge issue. I recall like this, the map that we saw, I feel it was a little older than the new ones that I've seen. And I saw more off-street parking then, but now I don't see as many. And most people in a three-bedroom home will typically have more than one vehicle. And I recall Mr. Strandberg saying that the CCRs will require residents to park in their garage and not in their driveway. I'm not sure if that has changed. Or can the residents park on the street in that development? And will there be parking on the road connecting Meadows Lane and Oregon Avenue for the single-family homes there? Because currently the CCRs for Rock Ridge specifically prohibit extended on-street parking. Additionally, I'm extremely concerned about the increased traffic on this development we'll bring to the intersection of Oregon Avenue and West 12th. This is a blind intersection and a bus stop with children crossing the road. I personally have had several scary encounters with traffic while crossing West 12th on Oregon with my two young children. If this development happens, the city or Mr. Strandberg will need to make significant adjustments to the intersection of Oregon Avenue and West 12th as to date, there has been no traffic study conducted for this intersection or Anacoppa Mine Road and Oaks Avenue. Mr. Strandberg estimated about seventy-ish round trips daily from this new development. And if Oregon Avenue and Meadows are connected, this is a gross underestimate as many Copper Pond and Meadow residents will now take advantage of this new shortcut to head south to Woodby Island. I know there's a lot of military families that live in these neighborhoods and make that trip daily. And the bottom or north end of Oregon Avenue where I live, it's currently one of the only flat parts of the road in the Rock Ridge neighborhood. During the summer months, there are almost always children playing or riding bikes in the dead end. Connecting Oregon and Meadows will create a major safety hazard and deprive the neighborhood children of a safe place to play and ride their bikes. If the access to the crossings from the original location were usable, that would be ideal, I think, for both Copper Pond residents and Oregon Avenue residents. But however, since this can't happen because of the wetlands, how will the construction vehicles access this property? Currently knowing that, I know that construction vehicles are bringing loads of supplies onto the property via the driveway right now and they're crossing a class-three wetland buffer when they do it currently, one that was incorrectly classified as a class-two. I'm also concerned about this, the road not being fully developed, saying that the property to the east of Oregon Avenue, like what if that never gets developed? Just a thing. So that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. It looks to me like we have one final party of record and Susan. Susan Lavelle-Worm. Can you hear me?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. So my name is Susan Lavelle-Worm. I live at three-nine-two-zero West 12th Street. And I attended the September twenty-third Planning Commission meeting because I was concerned about increased traffic caused by the proposed cottage crossing, uh, crossing cottage development. But I came away from the meeting being concerned about the wetland at the building site. The cottage crossing development hinges on wetland classification and downgrading the wetland on this property to lessen the buffer space. This allows for more building. After Mr. Strandberg and his investors purchased the property, the wetland was determined to be separate from the wetland across the street. It moved from a category-two wetland to a category-three wetland. And that's important because a category-two wetland has a large barrier of two-hundred-and-fifty feet. A category-three wetland has a barrier of one-hundred-and-ten feet. It's my opinion that the wetland is one ecosystem and that human intervention has created the state at nineteen-oh-five Anacoppa Mine Road. We know long ago citizens of Anacortes split the wetland in two by building a road through it. We know that the approximate twelve-foot culvert does not provide adequate hydrology between the two bodies of water on either side of the road. And also the previous owner replaced native plants with mowed lawn. I feel the city really wants to incorporate high-density housing into options for potential homeowners, but this site is not a good fit for the surrounding neighbors. An ideal site for high-density is a plant with its own entrance and exit where the high-density matches the existing development. When a wetland and wetland considerations are added to this mix, the proposal to build eighteen cottage homes, three single-family homes on approximately two acres becomes even more difficult to understand and accept. And I just wanted to address two points from tonight's discussion with the city council, between city council members. It's my opinion that the city council members may be misinterpreting what a wetland buffer is meant to be. It's a protection from human interaction. So the trail and the adding connections for commu, for outside community members to walk near the wetland, I don't think it's in the best interest of the wetland. And then also, a couple of other speakers have spoken to the facts about the, um, the land east of the Oregon Street that, where it only has one sidewalk. From our neighborhood understanding, there's no plans for a subdivision there in the near future. It's privately owned and like it was stated before, there is a separate wetland in that area. So I don't understand how that will be finished in the near future with a, another sidewalk on the other side of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Susan. All right. Do we have any other parties of record that I have not talked to yet? We have Susan, Carol, Sherry, and Sean. All right. So council, we now have heard from Libby, we've heard from the applicant, and we've heard from the parties of record. Discussion for you tonight.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Walters.
I was hoping Ms. Gratch could give us some overview on the wetland two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot buffer issue.
Sure. I, I will try to do that. And I believe that we also have the applicant, wetland biologist, and our staff, critical areas expert on the line too. So I will give it a shot first. I, I do believe that the wetlands that are on the west side of Anacoppa Mine Road, the air, the wetlands that are on the Port of Anacortes site, the way that the code reads there is that it is, yes, it is a category-two wetland, but the category-three wetland buffers apply. That's one of those strange things that we have in our code and that was agreed to by the city through a development agreement with the Port of Anacortes for that particular wetland complex. So it is not a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot buffer that is applicable on that side. It is a category-three buffer, which I believe, and Ms. Cooper may be able to correct me, is a one-hundred-and-ten-foot buffer.
Okay. That, that does in fact clear that up. So if we have, had adopted our new critical areas ordinance, we would have proper buffers for proper actual classification?
We would, but not necessarily within that, within the property that the port owns because there is that separate legal agreement that we have with the port to apply the lower buffer standard.
Right.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
I don't, I don't want to cut off the wetland discussion because I think it's very important. But I just, I just want to make sure Meadows and Oregon Avenue, I, I share the same concerns with a number of the folks in the neighborhood. Is, are those city easements, are standard on both sides of that? The standard city right-of-ways, are they standard for Meadows and Oregon?
Um...
Which I think is thirty-five feet.
The eas, the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I follow, the right-of-way width for the...
The right, right-of-way width, sorry. Yes. What is the ci, the city-owned right-of-ways? Because that's what, that's the area that we can tell the applicant things to do in. We can't tell the applicant to do things on private property. I'm just, I just want to make sure I understand what the right-of-ways are, where Meadows connects with, with Oregon. That is, that is my question.
Um, I can try and see if I, I can find that in the plan. In the meantime, if Mr. Lang is still on the line, he may have the answer to that question more readily available.
Eve, do you have that at this point tonight? Okay. I don't, he's not responding, so. Mr. Lang, can you hear me?
All right. You got me now?
I got you now. Thank you.
Right on. So the road width is gonna be twenty and, and, and I don't have the maps in front of me because I'm, I'm sitting at home. But the sidewalk is gonna be within a sidewalk easement if, if, if I remember correctly. The right-of-way on the east side is not available at this time. But when and if that is subdivided, then we would obtain the additional right-of-way to get the, the, a proper road width through there. Right now, we just look at it as a low-volume street based on the code.
Well, and that, and that's what I'm trying to generate the discussion is what, what is our city right-of-way now through that area? Because it's a low-volume street and it's, maybe, might become slightly more than a low-volume street. So I'm worried that we can't answer that question from the city's side. If the city, for example, let me give you, if the city decided to open that road without any, I know we don't do this, but if we did, we have, we have the rights to what exactly between Meadow, Meadow Lane, Meadows Lane, and Oregon Avenue? I'm, I'm trying to grasp that.
I, I, yeah. I remember it as being twenty-five feet right now.
Okay. So on, on both sides.
Twenty-five feet on one side.
It would be on, it'd be on the, the west side of, of the center line. So if, if the property to the east was to develop out, we would ask for additional right-of-way for whatever those improvements would be on that side.
Mayor Ge, Mayor Geer.
Ms. Clinton McGrath.
That was actually Libby. Go ahead. I'm sorry about for you.
I, I was just able to, to look at my map here and it looks like the right-of-way width of, of Meadows Lane is variable as it, it narrows as it gets to the project site, but the majority is fifty-two feet right-of-way width. And then Oregon Avenue is part of the old plat system. It's been replatted and, and that is eighty feet wide, right-of-way there.
So I, I, I think conceivably, and I'm not advocating, advocating this at this point, we could require an applicant to develop as much of either side of that in order to approve the project. Is that not correct?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question, Mr. Miller?
Okay. Because the city owns eighty feet of right-of-way on Oregon that's non-developed. The city owns fifty-two feet of right-of-way on Meadows Lane. If, if we hired somebody in the city right now, could we develop that on our own on, because we own that right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay. So that means we could conceivably, as a condition to this project, have this applicant develop that as, as much as we want, as much as we want or need because it's not, one of the issues is potential traffic volume.
Yeah. So the, the current code calls for a twenty-foot-wide paving for the low-volume street. And, and so by the time we get the six-foot buffer and the sidewalk in, we, we, Nels has agreed to a, an easement for the sidewalk. So to, to match the, the cross-section in our low-volume, um, in the code, it wouldn't fit in that twenty-five-foot buffer during the twenty-five-foot right-of-way.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Measmer.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one thing that, that we should identify is just exactly how wide the existing right-of-way is in front of the three single-family lots. And that right-of-way is only twenty-five feet.
Correct.
Thanks. Thank you. That helps.
Yep. And so as Mr. Lang mentioned, in the future, as the property across the street develops, we would then acquire another twenty-five feet for a total of fifty-foot right-of-way so that that transition actually works out in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I appreciate that, Mr. Measmer. I think that's a critical piece of information that helps answer some of these questions. I do think as well that there are some good opportunities all over the city, perhaps, but also at West 12th and Oregon to do some traffic calming devices in the intersections to slow traffic, present some obstacle to using it as a high-speed route. I don't know that it's appropriate to require that of this applicant as a condition of this project, but I would like to see us in the near future start exploring some of those things where we have identified problems with high-speed, uh, traffic in low-speed areas that are corner of M, um, and Tenth comes to mind where you've got the library and the museum and the ACT Theater. And I would like to see us start experimenting with some of those things, which strike me as very low cost as well. And it seems like that is an existing deficiency here that it would not be appropriate to make the developer pay for, even if it is made a little bit worse by this development. I am concerned about the amount of parking on the site and I'm wondering if Ms. Gratch can speak to that at all.
Well, Ms. Gratch, and then Susan Lavelle-Worm has her hand up again. Go ahead, Libby.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the, the parking required for a cottage development in the municipal code is one and a half spaces per unit. So eighteen spa, excuse me, eighteen units would require twenty-seven parking stalls. And according to the plans, the applicant is proposing thirty-four parking stalls for residents. And that includes a combination of, and maybe I should go back to my screen, but that includes a combination of the one-car garage that is provided for each unit, as well as the driveway in front of many of the units. Some of the driveways are not quite long enough to include them as a, as a stall for the requirements, but most of them are. So most units have two spaces. And then there are, one, two, three, four. There are guest spaces interspersed throughout the, the development site. There are five required for guests and eleven are provided according to the plan.
Can you point me to the, to an appropriate exhibit to look at that? Is there a map that shows the parking spaces?
Um, let me get back on my, if I could, Mr. Kaufman, if I could share my screen, I could maybe just bring it up.
That'd be great.
You should have the ability to share your screen.
I, okay. Can you see that? Yep. Okay. I'm sorry to be zooming through here. I'm trying to get back to the beginning. So I don't know that we have an exhibit that specifically identifies each parking space on the site plan, which would be... Exhibit five? Exhibit five, is the cottage site plan, and that's, um, this, this here. So this is showing, and I, I apologize, I cut off some of the guest parking, but there are four guest parking stalls down here, if you can see the, the red cursor there. Um, there's a couple of guest parking spaces here, 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 and here, and here. And then, of course, each one-car garage and then the driveway in front of it. Um, so that's, that's how the applicant is proposing to, to conform to the parking requirement. Does that help?
Mayor Gear.
Yes, I who spoke, I couldn't tell.
Uh, Jeremy.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Carter, go ahead.
Uh, did I hear you correctly that they cannot park in their driveway, they have to use the garage?
Um, that is not a city requirement, I don't, and I don't, I, I believe that what Mr. Strandberg was, or one of the speakers was referring to was the, a requirement that the garage be used for parking and not for storage. So, um, vehicles would be able to park in the garage and in the driveway. In fact, they would need to, uh, be able to in order to conform to the parking requirement.
So in order to use their driveway, they have to have two vehicles?
That, I'm sorry, say that again?
So they, they have to utilize their garage before they can utilize their driveway? So they have to have two vehicles in order to park in the driveway?
They have the option to be able to use the driveway and the garage. Correct.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Um, yeah, I am familiar with this type of requirement and CCNRs for a development like this. Um, uh, even experienced one where the development would, um, inspect your garage to make sure that it wasn't cluttered with junk so that you could fit a car in there. Um, I tend to think that these rules don't really work out, um, long-term and the city really can't enforce them. Um, that they're good tries, but they're, they're not effective by themselves. I, I think that maybe this development, um, will be incentivized to park, uh, within its development and to keep its garages empty because there's limited parking around it. And especially for some of the back lots, it may be quite a ways of walk to a park, uh, car park elsewhere in the neighborhood. But, um, otherwise, parking is just, i- it's, it's just an issue that doesn't have a really good resolution. Um, I, uh, here, we have parking minimums set in the code, so I think we're obligated to follow those minimums. I think we have parking maximums set in the code as well, don't we? We do, for the purpose of limiting impervious surface.
Yep.
Mayor Gear, there was, um, some suggestion that, um, we impose a condition restricting use of these, um, cottages from being used for Airbnb and, uh, VRBO, those kinds of things. Um, I wonder if Mr. Meesmer might address, uh, city rules on that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, that's a great question, Mr. Walters. Um, so currently, um, our development regulations do not allow, uh, short-term overnight rentals in residential, uh, areas such as this in the R2 zone. Overnight rentals, overnight accommodations are only allowed in the commercial central business district area.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Molten.
I had a question about that also, and I have a question for Mr. Strandberg. I read the CCNRs, but I can't remember if the CCNRs also stated that no VRBO-type overnight air accommodations were allowed. Is that, or is that in your CCNR?
Ms. Molten, this is Nell Strandberg.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, it is in our CCNRs that no short-term rentals are allowed, I can't remember the exact language. Um, we have no intention of allowing short-term rentals.
I, I think that's great and that also helps the, the city in that regard, because it's, that helps cover it, um...
No problem, I think we're in alignment there.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
And, and I, I think that's also a useful belt and suspenders approach to have those things in the CCNRs, but I don't think the city council should ever rely on, uh, development CCNRs to a- achieve the ends that we're trying to achieve. They can be changed, um, after the fact.
Does the council want to look at any of the conditions that were put on this project?
Mayor Gear.
Trying to, yes, Mr. McDougall.
I had a, another question on the wetland, um, but if, if somebody wanted to talk about conditions first, I, I can wait.
No, go ahead, put, get your question out there and then we'll...
Yeah, do we have, uh, one of the biologists or one of the, uh, individuals that pre- with ATSI who prepared the, the reports and the, the evaluation of the wetland on the call?
I believe I saw someone earlier. Oh, yeah, Carla.
Yes, Carla?
Carla, yes. Carla's got her hand up, Carla, can you talk to us? And, um...
Hi, this is Carla Delino.
Hello, Bruce has a question for you.
Hi Carla, thank you for joining. I'm looking at some of the maps from, um, from your team's report and it, it classifies on either side of Anna Copper Road, there's obviously, there's the wetland A and wetland B. And it looks like the, the two wetlands are essentially, were connected prior to the construction of Anna Copper Road. And then there's a classification of PUBH on the west side and a classification of PUBH on the east side, and then a classification of PSSC, which kind of takes up the space where the road is and sort of space adjacent to the road. Is, is that PSSC classification, like, how is it that they're not, wetland A and wetland B are not classified as connected? And is it because of that additional sort of middle classification there?
Uh, thank you so much for your question and, um, I would, I would say the short of it, uh, if I'm understanding correctly, would be no. The, the, the definitive distinction, um, for the two wetlands, i- it is in regards to Anna Copper Mine Road, which was constructed a long time ago, but it's an illegally existing, non-conforming use. And so when that road was constructed, there was a culvert, well, I don't know if the culvert was put in, um, with the construction of that road, however, um, the culvert that is present underneath the road is, is essentially the reason why there is, uh, uh, it's connected, but it's only connected during high-water events. The, the elevation of that culvert was created to essentially detain water in wetland A and only during high-water events does it travel over to wetland B. We, through the Department of Ecology guidance, um, we only have, we create two different units when there's only, um, unidirectional flow versus bidirectional flow. So if, if those wetlands did communicate back and forth with one another and equilibrate, um, their hydrology, then they would effectively be called one wetland unit. However, since we only have, um, connection during high-water events and it's flowing into wetland B, we have two separate wetland units.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that, uh, that's really helpful.
So right now, I have two parties of record that have, I suppose, a question, so we'll just take a moment.
Mayor Gear, if I might follow up on Mr. McDougall's question?
Um, well, okay, and then we'll take the parties of record.
All right, thank you. Um, you know, I guess, uh, the reason that there are two wetlands is because the road was put in over, uh, the original wetland during a different time when regulations weren't as strong. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so, thank you, I just wanted that clarity.
Okay, Carol, um, you've got your hand up, you're a party of record, you have a question? Steve M?
Yes, um, I want to add a little bit more to the understanding of, of the wetland and its connections. I took, took a long walk in all areas of this, of the site one day and just compared all of the ways this wetland is losing its flow. And so, uh, took pictures and walked the roads and saw the culverts and what have you. So, the reason that the east side of the wetland hasn't been classified as a category-three wetland is due to the diversion of its hydraulic pattern by roads, Airport Road, Pennsylvania Court and Avenue, West Twelfth Street, Oregon Ave, and other roads, and also by detention ponds, one located at the southeast section of Oregon Ave and West Twelfth Street, a detention pond in Tursey Park, and that whole park was built on top of the wetland. When you go over there and you see it's on a hill, it's on a hill because it's so, it was so wet. And when they mow the lawn, it leaves ruts in the grass, in the lawn. And walking, uh, the, uh, east side of the fence beyond the, uh, the water, uh, building there, I sunk to my knees in water in July, just taking a walk. So, the, this was once a, a huge wetland, but nearby land was filled and water diverted, including Clyde Creek underground. If all this water was not diverted or held up in detention ponds or, or, uh, by roads, et cetera, buildings, houses, it would be going into Copper Pond Wetland on this, on the subject site. Therefore, the bankful measurement taken on that site would make the buffers significantly larger. Thus, this project would be smaller in size and scope overall. Um, this wetland should be respected as a locally significant category-two wetland on both sides with two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot buffers. And, um, DOE has stated that just because a wetland has been bifurcated by a road, the wetland still is classified as one wetland. The culvert is perched and not compatible to carrying the hydrology correctly. It is undersized and should be larger or a, a bridge placed to allow for the connection. So, in all honesty, that's what I see going on here, as a biologist and one who's done wetland delineations in the past and been a permit, a person who issued nationwide permits and HPAs in the past. I see this as an issue and I'm just calling it the way it is. And so, um, that's what I wanted to leave the council with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Susan, Lavelle Warm, you have your hand up.
Um, so Carla, the, uh, the ecologist who just spoke, um, talked about unidirectional flow between the wetlands. So it's going from the property at nineteen-oh-five Anna Copper Road down into the wetlands that are owned by the port on the other side of the road, so from the east side to the west side. And one reason for the unidirectional flow, um, as I understand from the ecologists who looked at this project is that there's a slight downward gradient. So, uh, the, it can't, the water can't flow upwards because there's a, it can't flow evenly between the two, even if the water was at a high level, because there's a slight downward gradient to the, um, from the east wetland to the west wetland. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to you, council. Um, all right, well, Libby, you wanna, you didn't go over the conditions to begin with, maybe you could just do a broad sweep of the highlights of the conditions?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mayor, uh, Carolyn.
Okay, um, thanks, so I'm just looking at, um, in paper form, Libby's, um, plan that's up on the screen and I just have a question about the different lots. So, just for example, take lot sixteen in the top right corner, it says twenty-one ninety-five square feet. Is that the lot or the size of the cottage? The square footage of the cottage or the square footage of the lot?
Thank you, Ms. Molten, uh, that is the square footage of the lot.
Okay, great, because it's sort of confusing because the garage looks like a garage next to it, so that lot looks like the cottage, right?
I understand how, yes.
Yeah, because I just looked in the municipal code where it states that, um, cottages must contain no more than twelve-hundred square feet growth floor area in total, not including attached garages, which you referenced earlier. So, yeah, so that's a little bit, that's just a little bit confusing to me, but, um, thanks for clearing that up. So, the, that lot number does not correspond with the box that it's in. I mean, that lot square footage doesn't correspond with the cottage square footage.
I think it might just be a labeling, um, issue that's confusing because if you can see the screen, I've got the red marker up here, I think this...
Yeah.
...uh, is the lot and that this total is intended to be for the total lot.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I, 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 I appreciate you trying to move the meeting on and having Ms. Grange go through the conditions, although I would suggest that she touches on the, uh, ones that are unique to this project as opposed to the boilerplate. Um, but I'm gonna go back to an issue that I'm, I'm still feel is fairly unresolved and if anybody can look at, uh, the, the one I pulled out is, uh, um, C-13, it's just one of the, uh, one of the, um, you know, project maps and talking about the connection between Meadows Lane and Oregon Avenue. And it seems as though, um, the question I asked from the start was, are we going to match those existing roads? Or is the applicant going to match the existing roads? And as I look at this, the, the answer should have been no, uh, not yes. And I think that if there was a condition that I would put on this project, it would be to match those existing roads because I, as much as I understand about how right of ways work, we ultimately, as a city, will be left holding the bag on maintaining that until someday in the very distant future that somebody develops the, uh, east side of that, of that access. So, um, that, that part concerns me. So, Ms. Grange, if you want to touch on that, or Mr. Meesmer, I, I would appreciate, appreciate some, uh, more insight on that because originally I was told that those would be matching the same and they're not. They should.
Yes, sir, I see you've joined.
Or why we can't, why we cannot require that as a condition, that, that's, that's kind of my question.
John, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Miller. So, the, the roadways, as I understand it, will match on the west side. Uh, but we're only going to have twenty-foot of paving, we're gonna have a, a landscape strip and then we'll have a six-foot sidewalk on that south, uh, excuse me, west side of the road. Um, and the reason that they won't fully match up in width is, again, we only have twenty-five foot of right of way. So, the city, uh, would, if those roads were conditioned to match up, the city would have to take property from Mr. Strandberg or from the property across the street.
No, it, right, and, and I, I unders- I understand, uh, that, that issue. Um, but I, I think it's a, it's a major, major challenge, uh, that we could be forced to take that property, uh, rather than do the right thing and, and, and build that road properly now.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Claylon McGrath.
Um, so, Ms. Mees- Mr. Meesmer, uh, Ms. Grange, I mean, it is, it's standard that if, uh, if, uh, a site is developed, they're responsible for their, kind of their frontage along the main road and, and the necessary improvements such as sidewalks. Um, and it's standard then, that on the other side of the road, it would be dealt with when the adjacent property owner to that right of way, um, would do those necessary improvements when it's triggered, um, um, based on the development. Is that correct? I, I'm not seeing the cha- the issue here of requiring, you know, the twenty-foot road to be put in and then, and then the developer only having to do his side of the road. Um, yes, it doesn't always, you know, the road isn't going to, the other side is...
Um, yes, it doesn't always, you know, the road isn't going to, the other side isn't going to have a sidewalk immediately, but, um, that's kind of standard procedure. Could you speak to that?
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Ms. Cleland McGrath, yes, you're absolutely correct. And so, uh, our code basically says that, um, a, applicant will develop the side of the road abutting near property. And in this case, that's that twenty-five foot section. As the other side develops, they are required to develop theirs. On the other hand, if the property was owned by the same person and this road was going through it, then we would look at it and say, yes, we want fifty foot of right of way and a full thirty foot roadway with curb gutter sidewalk on both sides. In this case, we only have twenty-five foot of right of way to work with. Um, and so, that, that's how we end up with the twenty foot of paving, the five foot landscape script, strip and the, uh, six foot sidewalk. And, uh, Steve Lang could confirm, but as we're going through our engineering drawings for review, that west side of the road, the Meadows Lane, the Oregon Avenue would essentially line up so that as the east side is developed, it would line up as well.
And, and just to follow up with that, so at least if it, as is, if it was, it's developed, I'm assuming there would be no on-street parking until the, uh, east side of the road is developed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it'd be two-lane road, no on-street parking for the homes in front of it, currently on it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller.
And, and ag- again, you know, I, I'm, I, I trust Mr. Meesmer. I, I trust your judgment on the, on the legal part of the, the taking. But, but I do, I think in this particular case, we're creating a, a new flow-through of traffic and we're gonna create a safety hazard, uh, with a, with a, a narrow road. I think municipalities have a significant amount of authority to be able to, for example, widen this, widen this by what? I think it's five feet to get it to match up. If I'm, I, I need a magnifying glass to see the plans. But, to widen that by five feet, and, uh, I, I don't think it would be considered a taking, uh, i- in a sense that certainly we're not, not doing anything we wouldn't have the right to do anyway in that, in that right of way. But yes, I understand the city doesn't own that and I know that normally that's what we do. But we're, we're doing something pretty unusual, uh, as far as that particular connection. Um, yeah, help, help me out here that, that I'm, I'm going way down a wrong path.
So, I, uh, thank you, Mr. Miller. I thi- I think Libby is sharing her screen.
Oh, I didn't mean to be sharing, but yes, I am. I, I'm, thank you, uh, Mr. Meesmer. I was just, um, going to our new low-volume local street standards, um, which were changed with the last development regulation update in twenty nineteen. Um, a- and I was just looking at this particular road would be a low-volume local street and the minimum pavement width is, is twenty feet for a full-size road. Um, and parking is not necessarily required. It is optional. It, as part of our new standard. This is a little bit of a different situation 'cause we're trying to, um, you know, match two different roadway sections on either side. But that's, uh, that's that new standard.
Sure, no, that's all great. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going with simple logic that we're, we're leaving off five feet of, of asphalt. Forget, forget we're talking about parking or forget we're talking about sidewalk, uh, because it, it, five feet of, I don't know if it's five feet. I'm, like I said, I don't have a magnifying glass. But the, the chart I'm looking at on C thirteen Meadows Lane is thirty feet wide, I believe, and there's going to be a, uh, a notch out essentially of that road of about, maybe it's seven feet. I, I can't tell. Um, and, and we're doing that on Meadows Lane and we're doing part of that on Oregon Avenue. And it just doesn't make logical sense, uh, to, to leave that off for the next fifteen years, potentially. Mayor Gear?
Um, Mr. Young?
Um, yeah, I, I hear the point, but I'm, I'm also agreeing with, um, Mr. Miller in the sense that, um, if there's a way that we could have this continuity, you know, from that standpoint, I would love to see it, but I am agreeing with him at this point.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so the council does have an option to take a look at this street. And, um, you know, you could say, all right, we want to forego the landscape, the five-foot landscaping strip and have, strip and have twenty-five foot of paving. But then, you know, that, now you don't have any street landscaping.
Yeah, Mayor Gear?
Ms. Gray, or Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. Uh, so, I mean, from being on planning commission for quite a few years and discussing, um, the updated code, one of the main things that came up was the importance of narrowing streets because of impervious material, um, and water runoff, that, that there was really a desire, not just by our community, but nationwide when we talk about environmental impact, that the, you know, narrower streets, less asphalt is preferred. Um, also, it seems to be, um, that when you, when you narrow the street, people tend to drive slower than when it's wide and they can kind of have at it. Um, for pedestrian safety, having that, you know, five-foot grass buffer or landscape buffer is also really important. And then having, um, your six-foot walkway. I, I'm not, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Miller's perspective on it. When things are all lined up and, and the corners are square and things are, 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 are uniform, um, it does make it look nice, but I'm not convinced that, I'm not willing to give up that landscape five foot, or the landscape buffer, um, knowing that, yeah, it may be ten or fifteen years, but then we can mirror that kind of improved, um, street scape when it's, when the other side is, um, comes up for, uh, more improvement.
Ma- Mayor Gear?
All right, Mr. Miller, and now I have something I want to say.
Yeah, I, I, I have no desire for, uh, the, as the current plans, to give up that landscape sidewalk side. What I was looking for was solutions to the east side of that because my s- uh, six years on the Traffic Safety Committee tells me that this will be an issue, uh, as soon as it's done. And that's, that, and, and, y- you know, the, the asphalt aside, you know, we, we are, we've told ourselves that we are definitely going to develop that. We just haven't said when. Um, so that, it's going to happen. I was looking for solutions to do it sooner rather than later due to the very logical flow of traffic that's going to happen through the Copper Pond Meadows neighborhood, uh, on that direction for, for people coming and going, cars, that is.
Okay, thank you. So, I have a question for the council. I'm gonna hit a pause button for a moment. It's eight-thirty and we have, um, still quite a bit of work to do on this project. So, I don't know if we want to continue and try to finish tonight or move it ahead to next week. We also have several contracts to look at. And I was gonna suggest that we move access fiber internet business plan to next week. That would go well with the budget discussion. So, is there any, uh, considerations I should make in shortening up, you know, to give ample time for this discussion or any contract that has to be looked at tonight I need to be ma- made aware of? Um, so staff, if there's a contract we need to do tonight, will you tell me now? If not, I'll move those till next week, us to not waste anyone else's time. Okay, so, um, with the council's approval, then I'm gonna suggest we move, um, everything under item six, other business, to November ninth. And we'll take, um, the next, um, forty-five minutes or so and see where we end up, um, on this discussion. And if we're not there, we'll move that forward to the ninth. I was just commenting today to the directors that the ninth looked rather empty, but I think we're, we're filling it up. All right, so, everyone that's waiting for anything under item six, we, um, now are gonna let you know we'll move that to next week. Um, and we'll have it before we, um, well, we'll, we'll do it in a timely way so you don't have to spend the whole evening with us. So, anyway, all right, I wanted to get that off our plates. So, now we can go back and we'll focus on, um, our closed record hearing.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Um, I think I understand Mr. Miller's concern. Um, do I understand correctly that we will be achieving here twenty feet of pavement? Under the proposal as currently constructed, will we, will we getting the twenty feet, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, there was a suggestion in one of the comment letters that we put bollards at the end of the street to restrict, um, the street for emergency traffic only, removable bollards. Um, I, I think that that idea might be worthy of some consideration, except for the fact that we have a code provision that says twenty feet of pavement is sufficient for the low-volume local street standard. So, either we, either we, we would nee- we would need to change the code for the required am- amount of pavement for the low-volume local street standard, or we would need to determine somehow that this isn't going to be a low-volume local street, that it's gonna be some higher-volume street. Um, but I don't see how we could require something wider than twenty feet when we have a code provision that explicitly says that twenty feet of pavement is sufficient. Um, it seems to me that the next street width up requires thirty feet of pavement rather than twenty. There doesn't seem to be a, a twenty-five foot width requirement. And, and to get to thirty feet, um, you know, that, we'd be talking an additional ten feet. That, that would be a significant change. And I don't know that it's properly required of this development because it needs to be a proportional impact. Um, so there would need to be some analysis done there. My, my thinking is that maybe the twenty feet is the right, um, standard because it seems like it, it should be a low-volume local street. And that if there is going to be, if, if we find it likely that there's gonna be an increase in traffic, then maybe we ought to deal with that traffic, um, down at the intersection of West 12th and Oregon, through some kind of traffic calming device, uh, um, one of those Seattle-style roundabout things that stops people from blazing through an intersection, but isn't really a roundabout. You know what I mean? I, I feel like an alternative like that might be more appropriate.
Mayor Gear? Uh, I'm, I'm ready to, I, I'm ready to let it go. I was just exploring the issue because again, the, the logic, the logic escapes me when we develop the other side of that. Um, we're essentially going to go to thirty feet, um, and, um, and, and we'll be potentially dealing with it as a city to put in our own, uh, bollards or traffic calming devices at some point in the next couple of years. So, I was looking for a possible solution here, but it, but it is not necessarily fair to put it on that. However, the access is going away from Anacopper Mine Road. So, um, th- this was the time to explore. I'm, I'm ready to let it go.
Okay, all right. Mr. Young?
Yes, um, you know, I, again, I agree with, uh, Mr. Miller in this case. And I think that the, um, proposal, um, as was brought forward, um, to indicate that it's within code. And I think the choice was, I think what Mr. Miller was attempting to do was say, hey, we have an issue that we will, we will need to address at some point, so why not now? And, um, obviously it's been explored far enough. And I think that, um, Ms. Cleland McGrath, as well as, uh, Mr. Meesmer pointing out that it is within the code. So, I'm also ready to let it go as well.
Okay, so, maybe right now, um, Libby could go over the highlights of, um, the conditions, not the boilerplate ones, but the ones that, you know, that, uh, we need to be made aware of. Libby, your mic's not on.
I'm sorry, I got a long ways. Sorry about that.
I was trying to line up and I realized. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. Um, uh, yes, I was just talking about number one, um, which is just requiring a final, uh, cottage site plan be submitted that adds some of the, the items like, um, crosswalk locations and internal pathways connecting to front porches. Um, that's a wrap-up item. Um, each of the cottage units, or excuse me, each of the, uh, building permit applications for cottage units will have to go through review to make sure that they conform to all of the design standards. And that'll just be a condition on the, um, site plan approval and face of the plat. Oh, a lot of these are boiler, are boilerplate. Um, there are some easements that'll need to be dedicated. That's pretty standard. Uh, some maximum impervious surface calculations will be needed, need to be shown on the face of the plat. Um, because this is a unit lot subdivision, um, there are some language that'll need to be placed on the plat regarding, um, the fact that any redevelopment or new development of, of each of the lots will have to conform to the cottage housing provisions, making future property owners aware of that. There are some CIPA, uh, conditions related to following the geotechnical report, um, conditions and recommendations. And then there's quite a long, a lengthy list, um, regarding the buffer, uh, the proposed buffer uses, the buffer averaging, the buffer, uh, planting and enhancement, signage, fencing. Oh, um, there was one item in the traffic, uh, report that talked about a potential site distance issue for one of the new standard single-family lots. There was a, a hedge that provided, or that was, um, causing some view blockage, site distance blockage. And so, there's a recommendation that that hedge be trimmed or that some additional signage be added, warning drivers of the limited site distance. And I, most of these, the rest of these are pretty standard uh, public works conditions. There will, the private access drive will be required to be signed with no parking um, or painted curbing to indicate no parking allowed within those areas. And, you know, really that's, those are kind of the only project-specific conditions that I key in there, um, unless there's questions from council members about some of the others.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters.
Uh, we had talked earlier about maybe adding a condition extending the trail through the buffer, um, so that it connected to the drive aisle, um, on the southern property boundary. Um, I guess before we suggest actually adding that to the list of conditions, um, it looks to me like those are actually parking spaces at the end of that drive aisle. So, maybe that's not a really good place for there to be connectivity. Um, and second, um, are we expecting that this, uh, trail will be open to the public? um, are we expecting that this uh, trail will be open to the public and convey public access?
Mayor Gear?
Well, just a moment. Was that a question for Libby?
It was.
Let, let Libby answer that and then you go ahead, Caroline.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, under the current proposal, it is proposed for um, resident access only. It's not proposed as a public trail.
Okay. Well, then it, it might not make sense um, to add that connection.
Is that all your comments, Ryan?
It is.
Alright. Caroline, go ahead.
Um, so I was hoping that it could be designated as public in the interest of our, you know, many of the elements of our comp plan and connectivity, non-motorized connectivity, and also as a benefit for the surrounding neighborhoods, um, and a safety issue as well, and just making it part of our commitment to a more livable, being a more livable, walkable community and encourage people to get out of their cars that we're worried about driving too fast. So I think that that checks a lot of boxes in our land use and our transportation comp plan chapters. So as far as it ending, it, it a parking, couple parking spaces, sure, that might not be ideal, but I, I would like to, to further that discussion because I think that it is, it is worthwhile as a, as a public amenity.
Um, Mayor Gear?
Ms. Gray. Ms. Cleveland, sorry.
Um, uh, yeah, Ms. Moulton, I, uh, normally I would say I, I agree with you on that one. The, the, my concern with opening it up to the general public versus having it for um, the residents of this development is the fact that these are really small lots, right? And, and, and my experience with cottage housing, not in Anna Corners, but um, up in Bellingham, is they are surprisingly small when they're twenty-two, twenty-five-hundred square-foot lots, and then you have the twelve-hundred square-foot home. So those shared spaces are, even the shared spaces, if you're looking at the homes kind of on the, the yellow homes and that um, shared um, kind of yard with the path, rectangular pathway around it, when you're actually, when it's human scale, it's quite an intimate um, outdoor space for people to have, for those neighbors to have. And to introduce kind of um, the lar- the neighboring property owners to kind of walk through those intimate spaces is not the same as when they're, they're seventy-five-hundred square-foot lots and having people kind of walk by your front door. Um, so that would be my only concern when it comes to inviting, you know, the general population to, to walk through on these paths. And I don't know if the applicant has a thought on that, but that's just kind of from my own personal experience, um, being in ki- in these cottage developments.
Sure. I totally see that you wouldn't necessarily want people to go walking through those connectors that go into those open spaces, those shared open spaces. I was thinking more of just the perimeter and sort of edging the development with the trail and that maybe there could be signage saying this part's private. I was just, I just thought that it would be really beneficial on the whole to have that access through the main entry driveway and then just along the trail to Anna Copper Road, but not, I didn't intend for it to go through those open spaces um, right adjacent to the cottages.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I, I advocate trying to achieve these connections. Um, I, I, I think that we are really hobbled by a lot of the lack of connections outside of the standard grid system all over town. But here, we have the combination of, these are all private streets interior to the development, um, and the fact that this connection would go through the wetland buffer. I think that there's a place for especially a wood tri- wood-chipped path um, th- that is very low-impact in the wetland buffer. Um, I, I don't think that those are mutually exclusive uses, but I, I think a, a higher-impact uh, pathway that is um, uh, also used by the greater community would have a larger impact. And I already am not very pleased that our code imposes a smaller buffer on the wetland than this wetland appropriately deserves. So I don't think that we should, I think we should be trying to minimize impacts on the wetland rather than add more features to it. Um, if there were an alternative that would allow us to get to Anna Copper from the backside of this development here, from Meadows Lane, I think that would be really worthwhile. But no such alternative is jumping out at me without plowing through um, what is the more sensitive wetland area.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. Uh, the, the only path that makes sense is where the, the current access is to the property. Every, everything else is, is gridded in. Um, so again, I support the landscape plan that has the path that essentially uses probably the uh, existing gravel access um, when, when it's done. There aren't, there aren't any good places to put other paths through and restricting it to residents only makes, makes sense as well.
Nell, did you have something, the applicant? Well, are we needing, oh, uh, Nell, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that, I mean, I don't know that I need to get in the middle of this. Um, there's pros and cons both ways, and I think everyone that spoke on that issue makes a very good point. And I don't know what the right answer is, um, except everybody made a good point. So uh, I'm gonna leave it up to the council and if they go one direction or the other, I'll, I'd like to comment at the end if we're, if we're gonna change something.
Okay. Okay. Do we have other questions from Libby? I think because of the hour, I kinda think maybe we should um, hit a pause and bring this back next week because I think we wanna be very thorough in our decision here. Um, any, any thoughts on that? Is that something everybody, everybody comfortable with? So we're basically moving everything from tonight to next week. But I think now we understand um, the development. We understand the questions. This'll give you time to really study the plan and think about things this week. And um, we can come back next Monday night.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
That, that's a good idea and it, it shows the value of a site visit that we, we didn't, we didn't have and, and would have been helpful, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Uh, the only thing I wanna add on that is that if we are gonna be doing this next week and we are gonna be doing an hour on the budget next week and we're gonna be doing all of the other items under item six next week, I don't wanna give short shrift to the budget discussion. So if necessary, maybe we schedule, because we've already told people um, that we'll have an extension of the public hearing on the budget next week, but maybe we should deliberately put off the discussion on the budget until the following week. And I don't wanna get into the budget at eight-thirty next week and everybody's tired and we just pass it and go home.
Right, and I'll, I'll talk to directors tomorrow and, and we'll figure out a plan for that. Cause point taken. We wanna do um, justice to both, both items. Um, okay, I'll bring that to directors. I will, I will let you all know that um, your, your thoughts have, are sound, Mr. Walters. So at this time, barring any other comments, I'm going to leave this, um, this hearing, this, this closed-record hearing will be continued to next week. And um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for a really good meeting tonight. Great discussion. Thank you all.